Good morning. Let me call the meeting to order this morning, and we'll start off with prayer. We have today Pastor Harold Watkins of the Freedom Fellowship Church, and he's here to lead us in prayer.
Would you join me as we pray? Father, we thank you for your blessing today. We thank you for the blessing of rain. Father, I know that we make our plans, and we are diligent to do the right things concerning water, but ultimately, we depend upon you for the rain. So, we thank you for the abundance that you've sent our way, and you continue to send our way. Father, we thank you for our leadership in this city. We pray your blessings over them today. We bless them with the peace that passes understanding. We bless them with unity, even in the diversity of the people, Father, that you would bring unity. We thank you for the vision that you put in their heart to lead our city. And, Father, we ask that you give them godly wisdom as they lead us. Father, we can, your word says, "We can make our plans, but you direct our steps." So, we ask that you direct our steps, that you direct our leadership here, that they would, they would walk in humility, with purpose, Father, with great dreams, and, Father, that they would always come alongside those who are poor and needy. And I thank you for the compassion of our city, and the servants' hearts that are so abundant in this city. Father, today, we thank you for your love, and your grace, and your mercy that covers us. Father, we ask for your protection over our city, and over our leaders, over those who serve and protect our city. We ask your divine protection. And I thank you for the word that you give us in Psalm 31:21. It says, "Blessed be the Lord, for he has shown me his marvelous kindness in a strong city." Father, we're a strong city as long as we keep our eyes focused upon you. For that, we give you thanks and praise today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
He's a fourth grader with Cornerstone Christian School, and he'll help us lead the pledges.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Honor on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Union, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Good job, Mr. Anderson.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
He said, "Attention, salute." I thought I was doing something wrong.
Good job, Joshua. Thank you. We have a proclamation this morning concerning the National Medical Assistance Week of October the 15th through October the 19th, and today, I'd like to be joined by Nikki Lambert. Hey, come on up. She's a medical existing, wow, she has a title like we would come up with at the city. So, Medical Assisting Externship Coordinator and Career Services Coordinator.
That is great.
How are you?
Good.
The proclamation. Whereas, "The health of all Americans depends upon educated minds and trained hands; and whereas, the practice of modern medicine at the exacting standards we now enjoy would be impossible without the clinical and administrative duties performed daily in the physician's office, clinic, laboratory, or hospital by medical assistants. And whereas, these multi-skilled professionals help create a professional and comforting atmosphere for patients by offering them guidance and support; and whereas, through their dedication, medical assistants in this country have made and are making vital contributions to the quality of health care throughout the nation. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 15th through the 19th, 2012, as Medical Assistance Week."
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm just very proud to be part of the training of these medical assistants. Their diversity has been vital, no pun intended, to the health care of this city, and I look forward to their growth. And I appreciate the proclamation. Please recognize any medical assistance that you visit at your health care facility or at your doctor's office, because they are a vital part of your health care, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Finally, today, I'd like to take part in a recognition. We have a welcome due today to Daniel Valenzuela, our new city manager, and so, it's your first meeting, sir. Welcome aboard. And I'd like to honor staff in general for the work that you've done over the last six months, and in this process where we've gone from a city manager leaving, going to Longmont, Colorado, and then everything being taken care of during that time. And specifically, then, today, I'd like to honor Michael Dane for his service as interim city manager. So, Mr. Dane, if you join me, I'll, if I don't tear up your award, I'll give it to you, so.
Michael, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Michael is an assistant city manager and chief financial officer for the city now. He's the former director of finance. Council approved an interim city manager appointment for Michael on February the 7th, and he served while Harold Dominguez was still the city manager to aid in a smooth transition, and after Dominguez left on March the 9th to become city manager in Longmont, Colorado. Michael is from Clovis, New Mexico, and became director of finance in San Angelo in August of 1998. Dane has worked for the city of Lubbock as an accountant, senior accountant, and senior auditor from 1993 to 1998. He previously worked at the First National Bank of Clovis from 1987 to 1990, and the Certified Public Accounting Firm of Bender, Burnett, and Company in Clovis from 1990 to 1993. Michael is a certified public accountant and a government finance officer, and has a bachelor's degree in accounting and business administration from Eastern New Mexico University, that wayward place with Blackwater Draw, that is the enigma of Angelo State University, and so, and I still like him. He's the regional coordinator of the Government Finance Officers Association of Texas, and an advisory board member for the Texas Municipal Retirement System, and a great guy with numbers, and a great guy to stand in and do things on principle, and we're very proud to have worked with him the last six months. So, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
I think he didn't want to mess up the standing ovation. It's all right. Public comment. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Counsel?
Yes.
Number six, I need...
On the consent agenda, recusing yourself from number six. Mr. Morrison?
I have questions on number four.
Okay. Others?
I would like number 13.
Number 13. Okay, these are being moved to the regular agenda, right, gentlemen?
That was number four.
Four and 13. So, you're not tabling or moving them, you're just moving them to the regular agenda, right?
Correct. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exceptions of items four and 13.
And six? Why don't you just...
And six.
Oh, I can recuse myself on the entire vote. That's fine.
Easier.
Easier.
No, we didn't move six, just four and 13, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
He's just recusing.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
All right. Let's call for the vote on the motion to approve everything on the consent agenda except for items four and 13. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Note, please, that Mr. Alexander was recused from that vote. Item number four. This is a consideration of authorizing the purchase of wall systems, furniture, filing, and storage cabinets and so forth for City Hall, and Mr., from West Office Interiors. Mr. Morrison, how about going ahead and leading us in that discussion with your questions?
It's been about four to six months ago that our assistant city manager came to us and asked us for an additional $200,000 to buy office equipment for City Hall, and it wasn't budgeted, it wasn't planned, but we authorized an additional $200,000 for office supply for City Hall. And now, here we are, asking for another $100,000 for office supplies for City Hall. I just want to know what it's all about. I thought we'd already, thought we'd already crossed this bridge. I'd like some answers, please.
Mayor, if I may, please. That presentation, my understanding at the time, and still my understanding, was that was having to do with general fund departments who didn't have independent funding sources, and the need to provide some new furniture for those departments, not all new furniture. And that we had outlining, or I say, "outlining" from an accounting perspective, but we had departments with independent funding sources, or other funding sources, other than project revenues, which would be buying their own furniture. For example, I think Sandra Villarreal, through some grant revenue, purchased the furniture in her office, or some of the furniture in her office. That was the situation with the utilities folks, that they, through their other funding source, their own funding source, would be making purchases of furniture that they felt And while we may not have made that as clear as we could have, certainly, that is, this is an example of that having been done in other places, and this one comes to council because of the amount. Wick was the same way. Wick bought furniture from their funding source. And I'm sorry, I can't cite other examples at this point, but this is not project funded. This is funded from water and sewer revenues, and so, it was not part of that project summary, project wrap-up discussion that we had a while back.
I recall the same as Mr. Morrison, that when the request was brought to us for the 204, I believe is what it was, and it was detailed as to what it would be, where it would be, and one of us up here, I clearly remember them asking, "Is this all? Is this everything?" I believe it was Mr. Hirschfield. But it was my understanding that that 204 was everything, and I'm a little concerned that we have department heads, or whomever, going out and purchasing an additional, nearly $101,000 additional, in furnishings that wasn't approved. I want to know what this was for, what items it included, and where it went.
Will can give you the details, but of course, neither I or Mike were in charge of that project, so we're answering as best we can from memory. But I do agree with Mike that the comments were made concerning departments who had other funding sources for purchasing their own furniture. That would be their responsibility. Will is here to answer what they have purchased. They're the ones who decided as far as the furniture, and he can tell you what their needs were and why they purchased that.
Okay. I would like to know. I mean, $101,000 is a lot of money.
As far as the items covered in there, it's included with the background agenda memo. It includes just all of the different furniture within the water utilities offices of City Hall. All of our existing furniture was, that we had previously, was utilized by other city departments in trying to economize the best we could on available furniture at that point in time. So, we were left when, then, with just a few filing cabinets. So, this replaced, in essence, all the desks, all the panels, all the workstations for engineers, everything like that. So, it's just a complete replacement of furniture within the water offices of City Hall.
Okay. I guess I'm confused, Mr. Mayor. I guess somebody needs to explain to me. The city manager, the best that I can recall, doesn't even have the authority to spend over $25,000 without it coming to council for prior approval, but department heads can approve $101,000?
So, I mean, I'll get them to answer your question. My assumption is that it's on here because of the amount, but let's go ahead and let them help us.
Mayor, you're correct. It's on here because of the amount, seeking approval for that purchase. I believe the threshold's $50,000, but you're right in principle, the principle that applies that there is a threshold. Beyond that threshold, council approval is required, and that's what we're seeking today, is council approval for those purchases.
But this is after the fact?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask, Michael, these, this furniture, furnitures or pieces, they're not bought yet. You just went out and shopped for them, or the $100,000, has it been, I assume it hasn't been spent, right? You just went out and, department heads went out?
This, Will, this is the furniture that exists in your offices now, right? It's installed.
It's installed.
I'd like to ask that if our former assistant city manager, Elizabeth Grinstead, has anything to share with us, I mean, I think she was a big part of it also, so if you want to clarify something for us, I'd ask for that to happen.
I will, only because I'm a glutton for punishment, Councilman Silvis, but there was a furniture budget approved, approved by council, and...
How much was it?
Just over $200,000. Councilwoman Farmer is right in that there was a lot of discussion about the concern for that, for that amount. At that time, there was no discussion, that I remember, about what the water department was going to do themselves. And at some time later in the project, they decided that they wanted to change the furniture in their suite, other than what was assigned. And I don't believe that Will, Wildy and I ever had one discussion about the furniture that they were purchasing. So, I'm not, I'm not certain how the amount of money got to that point. There was conversations with another city employee who was actually handling the purchase of the furniture with, with the furniture company. So, I'm not certain how the scope grew as much as it did, but our intention was to come to council and use the budget that, that was approved, and as Rick said, that was out of project funds, that were the balance of the project funds. So, I really can't help you.
Okay. Thank you. So, this is part of the budgeted amount that was out there, or not?
No.
This is an addition...
It's department funds?
That's right.
Well, a lot of these items, I mean, they've got all these crazy-looking numbers, you know, steel case this, steel case that, and so, the majority goes where? To Will, or to different departments, or?
No, that, that space in the basement that they occupy is, I think it's two offices and one large area, and that's, well, I wasn't involved in the furniture purchases, my understanding is that those dividers, when you begin dividing up a large space, that, that drives the cost up significantly, and that's what they had. With the exception of two offices, they had a large space to break up, and that drove the cost considerably. And of course, if we get into more detail than that, we're going to have to ask Will for help, but that, that is my understanding what drives that cost significantly.
I guess my final, my final comment on this is, it was, it did set up a red flag, $100,000, but I thought we were set in place and running smoothly right now, and my question to Will, or anybody, Michael, do you, if we tabled this, or just held back on it, could we operate? I mean, we seem to be operating right now, but could we...
It's installed.
It's installed.
It's installed. What you're really doing is not paying the vendor.
Okay. It's already installed. I didn't realize.
So, basically, what happens is we have a $50,000 threshold on some furnishings that should have come, over $50,000 threshold, that should have come to council, but for some reason, it did not come to council. The furnishings are already installed, and this money is not coming from the general fund. So, based on the fact that it's not coming from the general fund, though I do disagree with how it was done, I don't think that we are going to not pay our bill. I don't believe that we're going to tell the vendor to come back and pick these furnishings up. So, I would, I would think, if Mr. Morrison's concerns have been met, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to accept, to approve this item, but I think staff needs to understand that in the future, it is very important that things that are supposed to come to council, come to council, so that we don't have these conversations. And it's very difficult for, for us, because it puts us in a position, it puts us in a position to where council is not really ensuring that staff does what they're supposed to do. It puts staff in a precarious position, because staff isn't doing what they're supposed to do. So, I would just like to make those, make that duly noted, and also, and go ahead and make a motion to approve.
And I'll concur with you, and I'll second that.
Could I ask that that be on the condition that the city manager will follow up on this and deal with this accordingly? Thank you.
Just one other question, too. I mean, you've got, you know, we bought all this new furniture for this and that, and we did those kind of things, and now, we're buying this, and you took your old furniture, and it went...
Where? Well, it was, we don't know exactly where it went. The people who handle the furniture no longer work for the city. So, we don't know exactly what piece went where. Those records existed at some point, just to coordinate the massive move of furniture, but to the extent that they had furniture which could be utilized, it was reused in other departments.
I'll look into that. Thank you. I have one final, could we have...
Just a moment. Okay. Mr. Morrison? I'm sorry.
This was an eight-and-a-half million dollar project when we started. Then, we added another million, two million, four for air conditioning. Then, we added another change order, 600-plus, 600,000 for ductwork. Then, we came back and added another 200,000 for furniture. Then, we came back and added another change order, 200,000 for a driveway and an awning on the west side. Now, we come back with another $100,000 for furniture. Plus, we went to the taxpayers for three-and-a-half million dollars on the auditorium. Then, we went to the coalition and got another two-and-a-half million dollars, and gave them our auditorium, so that they would finish their auditorium. We've spent better than $15 million on this eight-and-a-half million dollar project. We're still not through. The auditorium is still not ready, and now, we have another request for $100,000 that has already been bought and not approved. Where does it end, Mr. Dane? Are we going to have the, is the finance department going to be in here next month, wanting $100,000? Where does this end? It's been change order after change order after change order. This is so far out of hand, I can't understand it. It's, and no, I'm not going to support it. I'd say West Furniture can come get the stuff. This was an unapproved sale. Come get it, and do with your, do with your, whatever you've got.
My motion remains the same.
Of course.
Grace is under pressure here, because we have integrity issues either way. Not paying for this equipment is wrong, and the equipment being installed is a kind of an administrative fumble. I mean, it is, you know how we feel, right, Daniel? I mean, you can see this, and I just can't, you know that we're responsible to the voters, and the problem is, we're under pressure as well. And they're going to look at this and just, they're going to get after us. And we have a responsibility to be their voice, and that's what's happening here today. And just to the voters, we'll, behind, you know, when I go talk to Daniel this week, I'll be talking to him about this. That's, that's what I can say. And that's where I think we sit right now, and I have to vote yes, because we have an obligation to a vendor somehow we got involved with, without knowing. So, that's my comment.
It seems like to me that one of the things that our city manager can take a look at is, is finding savings in that budget to offset the amount of money that was spent without approval. And so, maybe somebody not spending money that they think they're going to spend could make up for the fact that they spent money they shouldn't have spent. And we leave that to execution and prosecution of the business. That's not what a policy board does, but it's a thought. Let me call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Sounds like I have one nay. Okay. Item number 13, please. Oh, did you need...
Is there any public comment?
Sorry, I didn't move forward without thinking of it as a consent item. I don't mind public comment. I have a vote. We're still on the item. I haven't moved to another item. Is there anybody that would like to make comment on this item? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Luisa Maria Torres. I am, I am married, but I don't use my marriage yet, name yet, because he hasn't deserved it to be on the wall. As far as the furniture, I'm 30 years old. I've never, ever bought furniture. I've always dragged it from somebody's house that has thrown it out, because they got something brand-new. I've went to Rush Street Ministries, Christians in Action, which dearly needs donations. They have wonderful cabinets, they have wonderful desks, and if this town can please buy their items, so that they can help the community, that would be most appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment on the item?
I have to ask one additional.
Okay.
If, if staff would have bought, and I'm just throwing this out, two batches of furniture, less than $50,000 each, would we be, even be here? That's all.
Okay. May I have one question? Michael, the purchases, these were by-board purchases, is that correct? I mean, these were, the purchases on the furniture, is this done through by-board? Was it through a group that, is that correct? Okay.
Councilman, if we had split that purchase, that would have been avoiding the compliance with the law, and would not have been an appropriate thing to do.
And I would hope that that would never happen, but I'm just throwing that out.
Well, it's before you, because staff wouldn't sign off on it.
Okay. That vote is behind us, that item is behind us. Item number 13. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute a Third Amendment to Engineering Services Agreement. And this has to do with Corolla Engineers and the additional wells, and Mr. Hirschfield, I believe you asked for the item. Let's let you lead the discussion, please.
Sure. And Will and I have had a little bit of discussion. I've gone through the contract pretty thoroughly, and I'm, I'm content with the contract, and I'm happy with the fees and such in there. I guess my real issue that I, that I've brought out is, I believe we need to have some schedule contractual obligations in there. Just, I just believe that that should be in there, and so, that's something Will and I've discussed. He presented a, the proposed schedule from Corolla, and I think this would be appropriate. It would satisfy me if we could add this as an exhibit to the addendum of the contract. And you're in concurrence?
Yes, we recommend adding the anticipated schedule as an exhibit to the proposed amendment.
Okay. You've got that?
That's appropriate, because the way the agenda item is worded is in substantially the attached form, so I worded it specifically to allow for additions.
Great. Thank you. And so, if anybody has any opposition, that, that's my, what I would like to have.
Okay. Go ahead and just make it, form it into a motion for us, okay, that we accept the agreement with the addendum item of the project...
Summude.
Okay.
You want me to make that motion?
I just needed to say.
Okay. Did you get what you needed?
I have a question. Okay. Will, it was my understanding that we would have these wells online around January 2014, because that was slow to me. Maybe next summer, it was fast enough, because we didn't have enough water, and we need, that was a really critical point. And so, I noted it as about January 1st, 2014. And so I noted it as about January 1st, 2014. This is showing a lot later than that.
As far as the schedule here takes into consideration, a lot of the time, being this is funded through state and federal dollars, to go through that environmental assessment, environmental reviews by the state and federal agencies, take up at least a half a year within the schedule right here. The other part of it toward the end of the schedule, this, this particular layout right here doesn't take into consideration starting installation of the collector pipes within the well field until the well drilling is completed. And that's primarily to be sure that we know the production capabilities of the wells. We don't want to be laying pipes where maybe a, a dry hole or a very unproductive well is. So that part of the project could be slid back to start earlier if we see we're having some very good wells being drilled and completed. So the, the overall timeframe on this could be consolidated as we get into the project.
When, when do we look at our water supply and say, okay, we're, we're in a dangerous period here because our water supply is getting low, we need to speed up these collector pipes? When do we do that? Next summer or when, when would you recommend that?
As far as that, we'll have updates of this project along with the other Hickory projects as we move along, kind of on a quarterly basis. So you can see where we're at on the well drilling and make a determination if we need to, to accelerate any parts of it as we're moving through the next year.
As we go forward in time and we look at how much water we have and we move into new drought levels and et cetera, will you please report to us this information and remind us again, this, this won't be complete in time if we run out of surface water and that we need to speed this up to get it complete?
Okay. Let me help you a little bit, if you don't mind, Mr. Alexander. I believe that that's why Mr. Hirschfeld has caused this to happen, okay? I mean, the whole process is what he's doing is on an engineering basis, he's putting a production schedule in place so that, that he's been tracking how fast we move the water from Hickory Aquifer to here with a production schedule. Now he's put one in place to say, all right, now let's track what happens on, on these wells. I think what's happening from Mr. Wildy's perspective is he was in an emergency mode where he's trying to do multiple things at one time, but not run a project the way you would like to run a project to make sure you do it the most efficient way, the most correct way. Now what he's doing is saying, okay, we have more water. Let's slow down and do this the right, methodical way. So I think that's why he's slowing down. But I do want to make sure that you, you see, and I think you do, but
I do.
this, this collection pipe system down here could easily be moved forward.
And that's what I want to look at.
And so he's just doing things in a, in a, in a stair step method. But if we start deciding we're low on water, he has the ability to then start doing things concurrently.
That's, that's what I want to be a part of, of future discussions. So that he's prepared when he comes here to say, I see we're getting low on water, to move the schedule up, to go into emergency mode. This is what we have to do. This is the money we spend, the chances we take.
But we all, we all need to work together and not each one person feel like they have to be part of everything. In this case, Mr. Hirschfeld's taking care of you. So I think you're in a great place.
I've got one comment.
Mr. Silva?
Mr. Hirschfeld, beep me to the punch. But I just wanted, I noticed there on the agenda item talks about services associated with installation of additional wells. I'd like to hear a number in there. I think it's the nine existing, seven additional, is that right, Will? Seven?
Five. Five additional, up to seven if the money allows.
Well, if we could throw some numbers in there, I think, and just?
It, it's in the contract.
Okay. But in the mo, it wasn't in motion, so?
But it's, we're approving the.
We're approving the agreement. It's in the agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion, questions from council on this? Public input on this item? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let me move us to item number 14.
Public comment?
Just ask for it.
Oh, I mean, not on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Huh. So I went through that. Did I just blow past it?
Yes.
Y'all, I appreciate your help, okay? Thank you very much.
Now we're going to the regular agenda.
Yeah. So let me ask if there's public comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Yes. I'm active.
Just right quick. I'm pleased to introduce to you our new civic events manager.
Thank you guys, I appreciate you.
Angelica Peña. She started Monday and most of us already know her. She's worked for the city for seven years in the Neighborhood and Family Services Department.
I'm very excited and eager to learn everything there is to know about civic events. And if there's anything I can do for you guys, I'm right in the back, between the bathrooms by my office. Come see me.
Okay, thanks. Other public comment on items that are not on the agenda? Come on.
Hello, my name is Luisa Torres. I do not use my marriage name yet. I feel he needs to earn that. I gave him everything in the beginning. May I give you my resources that I have accumulated in the past? Thank you. I would like them back. It's all I have. Thank you so much. This is what I've received from the FBI. This is what I've received from work in Texas. This is what I've seen. I've received from Salvation Army, Christians in Action, as well as, what else? Medicaid. I am in all these programs, Veteran Affairs as well. The reason why I'm standing before you is because nothing about me has ever been traditional. During when, how do I say this? When this used to be Mexico, people in Florida always said, go back to where you came from. Well, I'm from Texas. I'm sorry, you know, we, this used to be Mexico. They told us, go pick oranges, we went and picked oranges. You said, go pick cotton, we went and picked cotton. We didn't fight. We wanted work. We wanted to provide for our 10, 12 kids back when. May I show you my, my great grandfather? My grandma? I don't know anybody in Mexico. I don't go to Mexico. I always say I don't break the law because I ain't got nowhere else to go. I don't want to break the law in America because this is the proudest country I can be a part of. And the reason why I'm here, like I said, nothing's ever been traditional. When they sent us to go pick oranges in Florida during the civil rights movement, it was very hard to take your 12 kids into Florida. There was like 10 to 12 different families that went. There was a lot of racism. I am not a racist. I love all mankind, all my sisters and brothers. But I was suffered because my education in Florida, because I, I look Mexican. I am Mexican. But we were born here. We never left. We've been here this whole time. And so when I was in Florida, they put me in ESOL program, which is English speaking other languages. I don't speak Spanish. My, the way, yo hablo español, tampoco yo hablo inglés. I speak it the correct way in English. When I do speak it, the very few words, if I want to help somebody in the post office, they can't understand the lady. If I'm helping somebody in the grocery store, they can't understand the coupon system. I'm always trying to be a good American citizen to help them get by. But as, as I said before, nothing about me has ever been traditional. Both my parents were born in Orlando, Florida because they were both migrants due to the migrant program. Because I don't speak Spanish, they had me focusing on what color is the yellow bus all the way till ninth grade. That's a waste of my time. The school system in Florida did not help me. They never asked, do you speak Spanish? They just assumed. So I got straight A's in ESOL, but all my other classes were bad. I was a failing student. I was molested as a child. It was hard to tell my mom that because my mom provided the roof over my head and the food on my plate. I didn't want my mom to be upset with leaving me with the babysitter because I knew we were poor. You don't know you're poor until someone else points it out. Because if you're loved at home, you don't see that. So, being that as it may, when my father started trying to approach me, it's because I went to, to Florida to visit him during the summer. And I clung to a man because that's all I knew. That's the only way some men accept you, if you cling. And so I was a teen mother. My name is Luisa Maria Torres. I started having children at six, I got pregnant at 16 to a rate. I accept responsibility because I was the child at a party that was drinking. My boyfriend's father raped me. And that's okay because I accepted the responsibility. I'm pro-life and I didn't, I moved on. I got over it. But this pimple keeps coming back, ladies and gentlemen. It keeps coming back. I get over it. But the next generation. So after living in New York for eight years, after living, born and raised in Florida, my mother decided to come here back in 96 in February during the income tax season. And you know what? San Angelo, Texas is the first place I could be a single mother. I kept y'all to help me with food stamps, with Medicaid, with helping me provide a job for my children to put, to put food on my table. I don't buy furniture. I don't, this was a lovely gift from the Salvation Army. I liked their clothes. My dad, when I was little, used to say, it's either six outfits or two from Walmart. So I went with six. And then, like I said, my father was a love-hate relationship. You're always gonna love your parents if they abuse you, if they hurt you. You didn't, I told guidance counselors. I spoke to the police. I spoke to every professional that in Florida to help me because I didn't have the courage to tell my mom. Because then she'd have to quit and then we'd be poor. So after that being done, I did my best in New York. They sent me away crying in the welfare department. The reason why is because my boyfriend's mother decided that because she's on welfare, she, I can't use her address. That's happening a lot. A lot of families are closing their doors to their family members because they can't put you on their form because they're cheating. They're lying in your systems. In New York, she has a rent-controlled apartment, $200 a month, but yet she owns a five-bedroom house in Long Island. Rent-controlled apartment, $200 a month since 1975. She's had that apartment. That's the only reason I went to New York, to think that I could live there in that apartment away from her house. But I didn't. We ended up living at her house. I, I only got on WIC once. And like I said, the welfare department sent me crying because I just felt like a complete loser. I was 18. Then I, he became a bank manager. He, he succeeded. He's a wonderful man. I met him on a Greyhound bus because my father died when I was 17. We had to go leave Sterling County. When we left Sterling County, when we left Sterling County was because my father died. And like, I appreciate that I lost my father instead of my mother. Because I love my mom. So being that that I said that, I clung to whatever man would take me on the bus because when I was in Sterling County and we were moving, there was a gentleman that told me he had worked for me. And I, and I took him up on the offer. It was $40 a day to clean a thrift shop. So I went. The first day was fine. The second day was where the horrors started. He's a charming man. And then he's like, do you want to go to my house with me just to get some diesel? Well, I never knew Texans had diesel on your land. That is a shock. I'm from Orlando, Florida. We have gas pumps. We don't have our own gasoline inside of the, inside your ranch. Well, I thought it was, it was weird that he was getting diesel and then all of a sudden the fear of God came over me. I noticed his rifles in the truck. I noticed the dogs outside, the house. And then the white house looked like it didn't live, be lived in. It didn't look normal. It looked like an abandoned house. So when he got in the truck and he told me, look, we can, I know you're going through a hard time because my father just died. And he goes, if I give you $1,000, we'll go in that house right now. You can have $1,000. Well, I cried. I'm sorry, I'm not good at holding my tears back. There's a song that says, big girls don't cry. But it's kind of hard to hold them back. But it's okay because I'm not ashamed of crying. So after that happened, I started screaming, Lord Jesus, I was molested. I was hurt. Please don't do this to me. Take me home to my baby. I had a daughter at 16. So then, after that being made, I clung to any man on the Greyhound bus my age. This man got my trust because he looked like my grandpa. My grandpa is the only man in my life that's never approached me in an inappropriate way. I love him. He passed away five years ago. Being that, that that was said, I moved on. I didn't let that beat me up. But I don't go to Labor Ready and I don't go to houses to clean houses for individuals. I like being in fast food. I get the customer in and out in three minutes, tops, 90 seconds at McDonald's. I am great with customer service. I will always try to make you smile if you come to my line. Well, when I was living in New York, trying my best to make it on McDonald's wages with my, at the time, boyfriend who promised to love me. I followed a God-fearing man, but apparently he was a cheater. That's okay. I still provide it for my daughter. As, as I lived in New York, I saw the overwhelming of immigration. I felt like calling the Border Patrol because every time I walked by a car wash, all these gentlemen would start screaming, hey, mamacita. And that's degrading. I'm sorry, if you're working in America, you should do your job and not be yelling out to a mother with children on her arm. That is inappropriate. That is wrong. So I yelled and I screamed back, who are you talking to? Are you talking to the grown woman? Are you talking to my eight-year-old daughter? Are you talking to the four-year-old I got with me? I don't know Spanish. I don't know who they're addressing because there's a big problem in this country. So then after that, I went to the manager. He's like, well, there's nothing I can do. He's from Russia. You know, there's a lot of companies coming here to make money just to shop. They're not investing in our time, our mothers, or our families. So then I came, I went to, I went, I worked for Eleanor Rigby's, Emilio, and I got to meet a wonderful man named Larry Moricelli. He was a fire, a fire captain in Harlem when 9/11 went down. He, he's suffering such sicknesses, but he still holds together the restaurant where I got to learn to be a waitress. I liked being a waitress. It was fun. It was courteous. I don't like to take you away from your family. I am there to serve you and only you. You don't need to tell me when to bring another drink, what you had to drink. I will make sure that I'm on point, on time, and I earn my own tip. I don't need you to calm me down because I'm watching you enjoy your family. So my work ethics are very strong. But as I was working, my daughter got hurt. That pimple came back. And it wasn't with my boyfriend, it was his brother. And I didn't find out till my daughter had her period and she got the courage to speak up. I'm sorry, but when women have that time of the month, it seems like that's time to clean house, make sure our house is in order. It's not to be mean to the men, but if your house is not in order, the woman's gonna speak up during that week. We are taught to be gentle and kind and loving. And I'm a God-fearing woman and I need a God-fearing man to run my house. So I threw my husband out on August 13th to, because I needed to have a God-fearing man, not an alcoholic. I'm not against alcoholics. I see that they're everywhere. I see the diesel trucks coming into this town all the time. I remember when this town used to have pinkies on the outskirts of town.
Ms. Torres, Ms. Torres, can I just stop you for a minute? Our, our policy is public comment. We allow each person to speak five minutes?
Oh, I did not know that.
And you've gone past that?
Not a problem.
Is there something that you want to just ask of us or?
Yes, sir.
We'll give you one more minute, okay? And, and then we have to stop it.
Do you still have two more public speakings today? I'd be glad to stop now and allow them to talk and come back later.
No.
It's just a matter of trying to make sure the meeting moves in a reasonable, timely manner and that people get consistent, fair amounts of time to make their position known.
This is my first time here, I'm sorry. I did not.
So.
I wish y'all would have had some rules when I walked in. I don't have a computer at home.
Well.
I'm sorry. May I continue?
We'd like you to continue. And what Mr. Silva was asking is if you could fast forward to, is there a question for us? to, is there a question for us, or is there a action... Action request for us?
Yes. What are we doing with teen moms in San Angelo? When I moved here in 96, there was a 12-year-old pregnant at Santa Santa Elementary. When I'm here now, I enroll my daughter in ninth-grade center. There is an over number of teen mothers. I go to Medicaid. I ask them, "What do you do with these girls?" They said, "That's their problem. There's been a wave of them ever since." I said, "Ever since when? 98? That's when I had mine." I had her here at Shannon. I had my one-year-old here at Shannon. My question to y'all is, what are y'all doing about the teen mothers in this town? How can I help them? They... The daycare system here is nine-to-one. Nine-to-one. You got college girls helping out with these little babies, getting frustrated, working their exams. And they're taught to be a mother, but we gotta go to fast-food convenience stores. And that is my choice, because I chose life. And I know that all I need is a roof over my head and food on my plate. How can we help these teen mothers be mothers? You're losing the bond. You're losing the breastfeeding. You're losing the father. There is no longer a father in my family because of the fact of perversion, because of the fact of war, because of the fact of... My great... I've had a relative in every war. There was a vet that kicked my door in, in Sterling County. Thank you. I appreciate it. I have family members all over this country due to the migrant work. All over, California, Texas, Tennessee, Florida. We need our voters back. I want them to come home.
Yes, ma'am.
I want them back here, because they're my cousins. They belong here. They're racist in other states. This is the only place I could be a single mother. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comment this morning?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make public comment on behalf of, to me, what's an extraordinary amount of voters having problems with their water bills. I'm getting... Personally, I'm getting inundated with... I don't have to call them. It's... It's hard to look at a single person's water bill and say, "Well, that's not normal."
Mr. Alexander, can I interrupt you just for one moment, please?
Sure.
Ma'am, it took a lot of courage to share your story, and I want you to know that I appreciate your courage. And I thank you for sharing, because I'm sure that there's someone out there watching who needed to see that courageous stand you just took. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And she really uncovered a pretty big problem. There's also teenage homeless kids that, whether they have a kid or not, they're homeless. And I know Rust Street Ministries is targeting, uh...
Prisoners.
Well, Rust Street Ministries targeting homeless. That's one of the things they found is prevailing around San Angelo. So it's a problem. You've hit a problem. And we know ... We know of it. And the private sector and charities tend to help that out. But back to water bills, I don't know what's happening. I don't know if our... If our new meters are malfunctioning. Uh, I don't know if the Water Department's not handling complaints well, because if they're really good at handling complaints and the water meters are malfunctioning, they're gonna get overloaded. And it's... I don't know... I mean, the stories I'm hearing about waiting in line and listening to other people in line with the same old story, and I see on Facebook the same old story, and I see letters to the editor with the same old story, something seems to be up. I mean, I've been here for two and a half years, and this just seems to be out of range. So, Daniel, I don't usually complain like this, but I think from my training in school, what I would do is start running statistical analysis to see if we are out of range, in fact. And it's not... For a statistician, they'll figure it out. We need to be able to find a statistician, hire him, and let them do their work. And if they come back and say, "Yeah, the wireless AMR meters are out of range," or they may say, "No, they're not. They're the same as the others, but the entire city's out of range compared to the years." What are we doing wrong? What... What... Where's the problem at? Because there are... I just never seen anything like it. The number of... Are y'all having the same problem?
Yes.
Okay, so we all have the same problem. And I think you gotta go with statistical analysis first to figure out where the problem is, and if it's real or not, and how far out of range, et cetera, et cetera.
Councilman, um... Go ahead. Councilman Hirschfeld and I have met on this also, and it's something that I am looking into. It's not just you, of course. The councilman also expressed that concern also. So we'll be looking at it. And expressly, the way you had explained it also, as far as statistics and also trends, we need to do comparisons to see if, in fact, there's something wrong with the system at this point. And I'll update you on that.
And I don't... I think the employees at the Water Department would appreciate that. I don't know how they go to work every day with a number of complaints, and how they hold their chins up, and how they can stay happy. And it's just... When it gets bad, it gets really bad. And I think that's where we're at right now. And so we need to intervene and really put a lot of focus in there. And I promised lots of people that I would bring that up at public comment today.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, you wanting to say something?
Yeah, just quick personal experience. I put my new meter in. My water usage...
Go ahead and give us your name and all that, because we're...
Microphone.
And speak into the mic. All of this has to do with the fact that we're recorded.
Doug Noel. I live in the Century Park. They put in my new meter. My water bill doubled. I went and talked to them. They said, "Nothing's wrong." It went up by 10% again. I went down there and asked them to do something about it. They said they would send somebody by. They sent them by. I called, because I didn't hear from them. They said, "Nothing wrong." The next month, my water bill is back right where it belonged. We... My wife and I, we don't use a lot of water. I was treated so discourteously at the Water Department, like an idiot, that I didn't know what I was talking about. I had all my bills there for over three years. There's gotta be some methodology to get with these folks and be treated courteously. I know they're jumped on. I didn't jump on anybody. But when a citizen goes in with a real complaint, and they acted like I was the only guy in town complaining, I think we need to address that problem a little bit, too. I operate a service business. I do not treat my customers that way.
Thank you. Well said.
Sir, may I ask when you got... Do you know when you approximately got your electronic meter in? How long has it been? Is it...
It was one of the first ones that came in.
So you've had it for a year? Year plus?
Yeah, it's worked great now.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Yep.
And I wasn't going to bring that up, the discourteous treatment, but I had got dozens of emails from people around this town. And that is exactly what every one of them says, that they are treated very, very discourteously. And I wasn't gonna say it. I wasn't gonna bring it up. I was gonna talk to Daniel about it, but since he's already opened the can, I'm getting the same exact complaints, sir.
If it is the water meters that are messing up, no wonder. They're... They're being inundated over at the Water Department. So we kind of... We don't know where to start. But I think they need backup over there. I think it is difficult to get good customer service. And I was in the customer service industry as well. They need training. I mean, certainly somebody knows how to deal with customers respectfully in such a way that works. And if it works, then they need to be communicating with the other employee that this... This works. And y'all need to have meetings that, "What works?" Because I'm getting the same thing. It's... It's disheartening to come... Just to wake up and see my emails and take the calls. And how much time is each council member here taking per week on water? I bet you it's in the hours.
Okay. Further comments on this? Okay. And any other public comment? Okay, let me move the agenda forward. We're running in at one hour with just public comment, okay? So item number 14, update and presentation on the Ports to Plains Trade Corridor Coalition, and any action in connection thereto.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff. Not really sure what to think about the man sitting in my chair, but I'll get you... I'll get used to having him over there. It's my pleasure to be here this morning and talk to you about Ports to Plains. Some of you may have attended a COSA DC meeting a few weeks ago. Michael Reeves was in town to kind of let the Development Corporation know what was going on in Ports to Plains. And I'm gonna share with you a few of his, um, his slides and statistics, just to kind of reacquaint everybody with Ports to Plains Alliance. Um, for those of you that have been on council a while, you know that Ports to Plains really began, I think, with a movement out of the city of Lubbock. And originally, the... They envisioned a corridor that ran from Denver down to Del Rio, or we could say Eagle Pass, Daniel.
Okay.
But that section of the border. This gives you information on really what that original corridor was. But the corridor has grown, and there are new partners in the corridor. And one of the newest is the province of Alberta in Canada. And I believe Saskatchewan is going to be a new member fairly soon. This shows the Alberta region. Alberta, it's very interesting, particularly being from Texas. And Councilwoman Farmer or Councilman Morrison may comment as well. They are a fuel... Petroleum-based economy. And so there really are a lot of similarities between what's going on right now in Alberta and what's going on in Texas, up to Fort McMurray, where you have the oil sands, which you hear a lot about in the national news. Ports to Plains, of course, is also an agricultural corridor, which I believe is really how it started. And this slide shows you the percentage of land area that's still used for agricultural purposes in the U.S. So you see generally the layout of the corridor is also still America's heartland. Just to give you an idea, because of this agricultural activity, the size of equipment that moves along the Ports to Plains corridor. It is, of course, quickly becoming the energy corridor. I think Alberta really brings that home, and of course, what's always been going on in Texas. But in the corridor, you have five of the six gas-producing states in the country, six of the top 10 oil-producing states, seven of the top eight wind-producing states, and nine to... I'm sorry, wind power potential, and then nine of 12 for the wind power potential as well. When you look at... Back to the... Back to the petroleum industry, here is what it takes, though, to service one rig. Just the number of trucks, approximately 2,000 trucks over the course of that rig. That's an amazing amount of traffic that's now on the corridor. And again, just to give you an idea of some of the equipment that moves up and down the corridor, from its point of production or manufacturing to its ultimate destination, on the lower right, you will see a bucket that is actually part of a rig that is constructed in Acuna and moves up to Fort McMurray to the oil sands. When you look at the world's oil reserves, though, Canada is number three. This is one of my favorite little slides. This is Michael Reeves. I give him total credit for what I'm getting ready to do. And he says, "Who do you trust? Who do you want to do business with? Is it these guys? Or is it these guys?" These are actually women, though. Isn't that nice? The Canadians, or our friends in other parts of the world. That's why, though, that the oil sands are so important, because I think it gives us, as a country, a little bit more security. And they're our neighbor, and a very good neighbor. But oil sands are also very important to us because of the job creation. They say for every two jobs created in Canada as a result of this activity, there's one... There's a third job that's created in the U.S. And these oil sands are projected to generate $521 billion in economic activity in the U.S. over the next 25 years. As you can imagine, the companies that are working in the oil sands are all U.S.-based companies. Just a little bit more information on the oil sands and the Texas economy. Again, a very interesting relationship here. As I mentioned, here you see a shot of that... Of that bucket off that mining truck moving across the corridor from Ciudad de Acuna up to Fort McMurray. And here is the path that it takes. Just to give you an idea of, again, where wind power is through the U.S., similar to the agricultural corridor, with maybe a little bit more activity just slightly to the west. Here are some transportation costs that are related to the moving of the... Of the, um, the towers themselves and the blades.
I don't think that was a gong, so you can go ahead.
I would certainly hope not, but you don't know. And again, just a little bit more information on the infrastructure demands, that moving these towers, the blades, and all of the pieces, what it demands. It's really an amazing amount of effort. And this is a slide you can see somewhere along. Shows Big Spring to the left and Post to the right. I think we've all been behind one of these rigs and had to wait long periods of time to see them move through a community. A very important part of Ports to Plains, though, is to... Is to see safety along the highway. Even though we're encouraging the movement of product, whether it's raw or finished, we still want to make sure that we have a safe passage. An important part of Ports to Plains, I think, is the relief valve that it provides to the I-35 corridor as you move from the Laredo area up through Dallas-Fort Worth and points to the north. So this shows you how the completion of Ports to Plains could actually reduce accidents in Texas. Future challenges of the organization is to work on transportation... Transportation funding at both the state and federal level, is to work within a framework where we see declining gas tax revenues with increasing construction cost. Always a concern, though, is the condition of the highways, and to make sure that funding continues to keep our highways in the condition that they're in or better. The problem has been, I think, at the... At some of our politicians have just not wanted to address the issue as we see it today. Again, these are political issues that your board member, or your former board member, I think, could speak more fully on. Ports to Plains is always looking for new membership. It is a grassroots organization. They're... They want more elected officials involved, just to understand local economy and business, how it impacts the local area. But I think more important, how local stories all connect. And it really is a trunk system for a lot of communities and industry. One way to get involved is to attend Ports to Plains meetings. There are quarterly meetings and an annual meeting, of course, every year. And the next one is in Amarillo, Texas. We just all came back from Medicine Hat, Alberta. There are also regional work group meetings, which our city has been a leader in, our Southern Work Group. And there is a Northern Work Group that just assembled last week in Saskatchewan. Also, there have been various summits throughout the years that deal with one topic. I think the most recent was an energy summit. We want you to know, though, really what Ports to Plains means to West Texas. And, you know, we... We're... We've been very, very effective, and I think our mayor has a lot to do with that, in working with Representative Darby to really bring home what this means to our region. Certainly, the Super 2 that's being designed from San Angelo to Sonora is a... Is a huge... Is a huge project and a huge win. We all would like a four-lane divided highway, but until that time comes, I think the Super 2 is an excellent alternative. The Big Spring Relief Route, again, another victory. Four-lane Texas 349 between Lamisa and Midland has been important, as well as the Super 2 along U.S. Highway 87 between Dumas and Hartley. U.S. 87, the Lubbock-Woodrow Road overpass, the Plainview-Frontage Road conversion, as well as the Super 2 from Eagle Pass to I-35. Mentioning a little bit about the Southern Work Group. Those of you that have heard this story remember that several of us, including Councilwoman Farmer and Councilman Silves, attended a trade mission in Mexico City. We were encouraged to do so by Michael Reeves and Ports to Plains. It was actually hosted by the Chamber of the Americas. When we returned, we realized that we had a lot more in common with the economy of Coahuila in some respects than we did of Louisiana and Oklahoma. And we thought we would like to bring some of that information back to West Texas. And we held a trade summit in February of 2010 that was attended by approximately 125 people. The important part of that, though, was the second day. Many of our speakers that were from all over Texas, as well as Mexico, sat and discussed issues of mutual interest and decided at that time that they wanted to continue to meet. And that's really how the Southern Work Group was born. Council agreed to support my involvement in that. And we began trying to organize and promote the Ports to Plains corridor within the Mexican states of Coahuila, Chihuahua, Durango, and Sinaloa. Now, Chihuahua is not on the highway corridor, but of course, it is a part of our rail line that intersects with us. You're looking... Have I missed something?
No.
Okay. In October of 2010, we presented at the National Conocentra Meeting. The Conocentra is really a chamber of industry in Mexico. There are local, state, and it has a national board. And we presented at Mazatlan, and then had a small work group meeting after that. Though it was small, we met new partners. We met the representatives from the port of Mazatlan there, and as well as several individuals that were working in Durango. So again, introductions to these folks. The next February, along with rodeo season, we had our next summit. And at that time, we began working on an action plan. Not... Not a lot of progress made, a lot of discussion, but that was really the birth of the action plan. In July, then, of last... A summer a year ago, several... Several of us traveled to Topolobampo in Los Mochis in Sinaloa. Again, this is where the rail hits the coast to the Deepwater Port. And we met with leaders there, both elected officials on the state and local level, as well as individuals from the Conocentras. We had a similar meeting with the Minister of the Economy in Chihuahua City two days later. The next trade summit rolls around, our participation had dropped off slightly, but I think the quality of the discussion was much better, as well as the commitment of these folks. These kind of weren't looky-loos. They were people that were very interested in specific activities. And the next day, then, we made significant progress on our action plan. Most recently, we met in Durango. Again, what we've had is kind of a summer meeting, I think you see. Part of this trip was a reception with the Minister of the Economy, Juan Francisco Gutierrez-Fragoso, as well as a breakfast meeting with Governor Herrera. And that is the photograph that you see there. I can see Councilwoman Farmer, myself, almost eclipsing Michael Reeves, poor thing, MLA Laura Ross from Saskatchewan. Laura came down to see what our Southern Work Group does. Laura came down to see what our Southern Work Group does because she has been an advocate for that in the northern region. And then I see Luke Bram, who also attended with us. We also toured one of their large companies in Durango City. It's Biopapel. It's a paper company that uses 100% recycled paper. We met with the regional cattle unions of northern Durango. There's a great deal of beef that is shipped out of Durango into Texas. A lot of it actually cut here and then sent back to Mexico for retail. Then we met with the Entrepreneurial Council of Durango. And then finally, our work group meeting where we completed our strategic action plan. Our last event was a closing dinner that was hosted by Sotero Soto, who is the National Vice President of the Conocentra. This is just a slide of our meeting. We really have become leaders in this. People all over Mexico now know where San Angelo is, and that's a great thing. We have created a vision that they now share. And for those of you that have participated, I think you can speak to this as well. Most importantly, your Development Corporation staff recently hosted Conocentra members from Torreon. And they are very interested in perhaps locating an office in San Angelo. I'll let Sean talk more about that in the future. But looking at ways they can expose Torreon to San Angelo. There are also some very interesting projects that have been discussed in a very infantile stage, and they have to do also with some cultural exchange, which seems to be more of an offer than a take, which is really interesting. Councilman Alexander has, I think, will probably be very instrumental in that project. Speaking of Councilman Alexander, on the last day of our trip, he left Durango and made a drive over to Torreon. And he drove the auto pista. And here it shows a sign. I don't know who took these. Did you, you and Joe take these?
I took lots of pictures. And it may have been Joe. He took lots of pictures, too.
This is a, unfortunately, it's raining at the time, but this just shows the quality of highway.
Is that like the Autobahn? What is that?
It's like our interstate.
How fast were you going?
Eighty, forty, eighty-five. Speed limit's 110 kilometers per hour, but they don't travel that.
This is a, it's a toll, most of the new highways are toll highways, so they're not congested in very good quality, as you see here. Why have we focused so much on Mexico? The original Ports to Plains Alliance had just really not done a lot of work in Mexico. But we had, we have Mexican states that are very interested in participating somehow. And of course, if you see here, you see our connectivity to the ports, which, of course, comes from the title Ports to Plains. A little information here having to do with the Ports to Plains states and their economies and how that has to do with the Mexican states. And you see the value of that increasing significantly between the years 2004 and 2011. Similarly, here showing Mexican imports in millions that come through Texas. This is simply on the highway. This doesn't reflect any rail movement. Again, significant growth in these areas. And before I leave, I have to mention rail connectivity. One of the very important parts of San Angelo's location is the fact that we do have rail that can make a direct connection to the Port of Topolabampo. It shows right here. And we think this is very important for our community to be able to capitalize on its location, strategically located between interstates I-10 and I-20, located on the north to south Ports to Plains corridor, which does give us access by rail and highway to deep ports. We have a great deal of available land in West Texas, and we believe that makes us an excellent, excellent location for what could be a multimodal freight facility at some point. This is an idea that has been involved with Ports to Plains, but no community, I don't think, is talking about it as much as we are. And with our proximity to Mexico and again, just the other factors that I've listed, we still think that this is a very viable project for our region and a very important one for our region. And with that, I will close with Michael Reeves' information. He would be the person for you to get in contact with. And Mayor New, I just had to throw in a photograph of you before the ending of the presentation.
Comments?
The governor, of course.
With the governor of Quahweela.
Questions for?
No, I have a report.
Okay, Ms. Farmer, you want to add to the report?
Yes, I want to give the financial on it and touch on why it's important for our participation in this. The Port to Plains group is funded strictly by membership dollars. And through the first eight months of the year, their total revenues was $671,464 and a few cents. As of year-to-date, their net income, this is a conservative group, but their net income is sitting at $313,289. At the board meeting, all of this was discussed and the importance of capitalizing on membership and more members that we needed to be going after to sustain Port to Plains movement and involvement. Why is it important to us and what do they need from us, whether it be Mexico or Canada? I can just simply say that we, at the meeting, we did share some information, was given to us about the problems that they're having, border crossings at Canada. You can feature what Ms. Grinsteff just showed us in the transports that's crossing our roads, our corridor, right straight up through our city. Well, those items transported, for instance, because there's not a 24-hour border crossing. It's only an eight-hour, and the group is working very hard to make it a minimum of 16 hours, hopefully a 24-hour gate. But those transports have been held up as much as 14 days at the border because of paperwork. It's a two-lane road.
I think one of the most interesting facts, listening to the Canadians talk about their border crossings, is that they really have much less capacity than we have on our Mexico borders. And policies that the U.S. are using with Canada seem to be more restrictive than they are with what the U.S. is doing on the Mexican border. So it's, we're not really sure where the, it's not a lack of cooperation.
They need our help, is the way they put it exactly. They need our help in getting these goods that are being manufactured in Mexico, crossing right through here and getting them back so that these goods, the price of these goods, don't skyrocket because of the red tape delay getting back and forth. So that's our participation to understand there was a very, very large group of business-to-business people there, large manufacturers corporations who are seeking the help of the Port to Plains to get these goods transferred and listening to them. They're excited. I will tell you that this conference, very large conference, there was 206 attendees to the conference other than board members. But there were 16 sponsors from Canada and 26 sponsors from the United States. And they raised $106,500 in sponsorship fees to help pay for this meeting so that that money doesn't affect their bottom line and budget. So they work very well conservatively. I do have with me today, and I'm going to give it to you, Mr. Mayor, to go over with city manager, is the Board of Directors' quarterly report. I would like for these to be placed in the library there, fourth-floor meeting room. So it's available for anyone from Costa D.C. or anybody in the city to look at and to see. It's very informative, very helpful to understand what the group is doing, why they're meeting at these places, and what the purpose of the meeting is. So I'm going to give that to you. But I also want to mention that San Angelo, I believe, is the third-largest member in dollar-wise to the Port to Plains group. If you look at our total dollars between our Chamber of Commerce and our county, we're $72,331 strong in membership fees per year. And I want to pass that down to you to keep and will provide future books to have on hand, to be looked at. There was a very thorough report given by Elizabeth on the Southern Work Group's plans that we started. I believe, Mr. Mayor, you and I shared a committee on that in October of last year and where we have progressed to. This report was given to the board in Canada. And like Elizabeth said, the Northern Work Group now is a spin-off from the work that the Southern Work Group has done to contribute and to help and keep things moving. It was a great meeting, very informative. It's an education for me each time, and I hope that I can come back and share that education and what the purpose is and to be able to answer the questions. I did jump off, Mr. Mayor. I invited the mayor of Medicine Hat to San Angelo to meet with the Chamber of Commerce. I got Phil Neighbors involved as he was up there. And the mayor is more than willing to travel to San Angelo and visit with our organization, our city, and talk to him about why Port to Plains is so important to a city, Medicine Hat, 68,000 people, why it is so important, and the goods and everything that transfers. There's billions of dollars a year that leave and cross these borders, and they're coming right through San Angelo. And I firmly believe that there's a lot of power and prosperity for all if we can tap into it.
Questions for these?
It's really important to see what the Mexican government is doing in Mexico. They have two highway links. Can you go back to the map? From Mazatlan to Durango, they're building a bridge. And tell me what the name, the Baluarte?
Baluarte.
Okay. That is a bridge bigger than the bridge at Hoover Dam.
Three times.
Three times as big. And so what used to be a five-and-a-half-hour trip is now going to be, what, a two-and-a-half-hour trip? So it's like going from San Angelo to Midland and taking six hours. You just kind of want to avoid that kind of trip. Now they're going to link that. And then also from Torreon to, is it Del Rio or Eagle Pass? They're constructing a highway there.
It's actually, I think, as far as Allende, just south of Eagle Pass.
So this will also shorten the route. So Mazatlan suddenly connects into San Angelo. And then also the railroad bridge crossing the Presidio. The United States government needs to get on the ball and get our part done, and we'll have that connection as well. So with those connections, suddenly, San Angelo has location, 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 which is not something we can say very often. We're the intersection of the railroad and the highways, and we even have opportunities to, I think we should build up from Ballenger to Cisco and connect into the DFW area. And we're very well positioned. That's my thing. That's not Ports to Plains thinking.
I told him we might not mention that at the Ports to Plains meeting, but certainly...
That is my thinking because now they can go two different directions, and they don't have to go I-35 anymore. They can come right through San Angelo, through Ballenger, Cisco, and they're right on track, better, easier route because it's less congestion. So we have tons of opportunity in San Angelo in our future with this highway. It's a big deal to us.
Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up, I failed to mention, and I wanted to mention, you know, I strongly feel our participation is very important in our depth of knowledge with each of us up here in rotating out positions so that we stay continued. I want to thank Ms. Grinsteff for the work that she has done in the last three years on the Southern Work Group. It's because of her that we have gotten as far as we have in putting together, and she's done an outstanding job. And I hate to see her go, and I hope she'll continue to be a part of the Southern Work Group. But that leaves us with a staff position that we really need to concentrate and get with the city manager on who is to fill that void, to keep this momentum and this ball going. And the other thing is, we never did appoint an alternate. I'm not asking for that for today, but I would like us to give consideration, you know, the county's involvement in this is very, very important. And, you know, possibly if you could look at things there as to what we should do.
They have actually approached us and asked that we consider them
Great.
for the alternate position, the county, because they've been a dues-paying member, have not been represented on the board. And so I appreciate you bringing it up. I think it's something worthwhile for us to consider.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Elizabeth, real quick, first of all, I've got three, three questions. First one, National Conocentra, what is that?
It's an acronym for the Camera, Chamber of Industry. Don't make me do that.
Like a Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, but it's industry. It's not small business. It's very specifically large business, large industry.
And secondly, you talked about the reduction in traffic fatalities for Texas is at like 47%. Where does that come from?
Well, if I go back, the...
You don't have to, but is it text dot or is it?
Yeah, those are text dot numbers. But the concerning thing, and I think this is a consistent message that we get, is that there's a, per capita, there's a higher incident of accidents in rural Texas than there is in urbanized Texas.
And the last, what I find sort of concerning is, we talk about, we always talk about border security with Mexico, you know? But then, being restrictive, whatever you want to call it. But do we have a more lax border security with Canada? Is it wide open or is it?
Well, our, you know, in Texas, we have a natural border that is monitored. And of course, I can only speak somewhat to this. But if you look at the Canadian crossings, the crossings that we kept discussing at Wild Horse, that looks like a two-lane county road that has no shoulder as you leave, as you leave the point of entry.
And you can't pull off in the field to turn around because of the moisture, the amount of snow, rain that they have.
I mean, it really is, it's really interesting. Of course, you know, when you look at Laredo, you look at Eagle Pass, you look at Del Rio, we have, we want more capacity. But what they are dealing with is something that is very, very restrictive. And once you go to Canada and you understand this oil industry, it's like if everything that's happening right now in West Texas was choked down to two county roads, that's what they're dealing with. It's really strange.
So we have a wide-open northern border.
But their border is very different. It's a, it's fields.
There's no roads.
They're fields and...
It's fields. It, they're, it's not hard surface. It's mushy. You're going to...
I guess what I'm saying is, it wouldn't take roads for those folks that want to do us harm to come in, you know?
You walk through a field. They're very serious about their, they're very serious about border security. But it's a very different border, very different issues.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this presentation? Of course, I'll get to public, let me ask for public input in just a second, and I will. First thing I do is go here, and then I'll go out there, and I'll bring you up, okay? Anything else up here? All right, now's the time. Public input on this item.
My husband is a worker for the oil field. He's worked for Heartland. He's worked for Colorado Drilling. He's worked for Sandero. He has an alcohol problem. They're giving you $4,000 a month. They get you seven days on, seven days off, maybe 14 days on, 14 days off. He used that extra money not to benefit our family but to become an alcoholic. These men in this town, they're four to a truck. I had a problem with the school system. Somebody told my daughter to walk off ninth-grade freshman campus. I wanted to find out who. There's four to one. Every hotel down Chaplain Street is full. I could not get in.
Okay. I got to help, I got to help you do what you're supposed to, okay? Now we're on regular agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was regarding what she was talking about.
That's exactly it. So make sure you bring us to...
I'm trying.
Attaboy. Remember, you've got a limited amount of time. So all I'm trying to do is get you to give us a little background, not too much, a little background.
I need to know that my kid's not going to be a Hillary Dunn from these four-to-one trucks. I need to make sure that my husband recovers from being alcoholic. He got hit from Colorado Drilling. I said, "Report it." He said, "No." I went to railroad commissions to tell them my husband is not able to go to work. He crushed his neck, went into his shoulders, and they told me, "Well, that's your husband's job." I said, "He doesn't want to get blackballed." He says, "He doesn't want to get blackballed. He doesn't want people..." Oil rigs don't want you complaining about getting hurt. They don't want a workman's comp. They don't want the mother. I went as a representative of my husband to tell him, "He's hurt. He can't go on an oil rig. He's going to blow somebody up." And they told me, "There's nothing I can do other than go to OSHA. Thank you."
Okay, back to Ports to Plains, okay? Okay. Other public comment on this item? I'm going to call for a break right now, but right before I go to break, let me make sure that I understand... I think I'm talking without my mic. I apologize. I will call for a break now, but what I'd like to do is get an idea of who's in the audience for what items. Are, how many of you are here for a zoning item, something related to a zoning item? One, two? Okay. And...
We have 18 and 19.
How many of you are here related to some of the fee increases that are being proposed Okay, someone help me. Is there another item that I can help you get to and let you get on with your business?
Item 20.
Item 20. Okay. Can you guys, I apologize, but do you mind going ahead and telling me the item number that you're thinking about? 18. Sir, you also raised your hand in the gray coat. I can't quite see your face. Which item, sir?
It's not on there.
Not on there.
It's not on there. He's talking about Edmund Boulevard and Howard, his family daughter that we talked about.
But so it's either public comment or future agenda?
It's future agenda.
Sir, that's going to be right at the very end of the meeting for you, okay? So just be aware of that.
But he could talk to the city attorney right now. There's information...
Well, he can, that's fine. But I just, if he wants to approach the council...
Right.
It would be during future agenda, right at the end of the meeting, so after lunch. So I just want you to know that, Mr. Maxwell, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hockel has, what number?
I have number 19.
19.
18, 19, 20. Are there other people, other agenda items that folks are here for? Okay.
Item 22.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call a break now and that just allows me to try to help you get on with your lives and not make you sit here and listen to everything we do. Okay, thank you very much. Let's call for a break now. Folks, let me call a meeting back to order. What I'd like to do with councils' indulgences is take care of items 18, 19, 18, 19, 20, 22, and 25. That'll help our citizens and help them get out of here and get, okay?
18, 19, 20, 22, 25?
Yes, sir. So it'll be 18, 19, 20, 22, 25, and then we'll see if we can't get that taken care of and hopefully before lunch, okay? Item number 18 is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 12 related to zoning case 1212 Frederick Mueller. And we have a presentation by our planning manager, A.J. Fawer. Hello, madam.
Our first case this morning is a request for a zone change from ranch and estate to heavy manufacturing. This is in an area that you're all likely familiar with, as it is the area which you recently, or I should say, a segment of the area that you recently annexed to the city of San Angelo in December of 2011. On this request, we sent eight notifications as required by state law. We received two of those in favor. Those were in your background packets. And we received zero in opposition to the request. Here is a view of the subject property. It is located between the corridors of Old Ballenger Highway to the northwest and North US Highway 67 to the southeast.
So it's adjacent to the Hersfeld manufacturing facility?
That is correct. Your Chaparral Commercial District development is here immediately to the east of this property.
And immediately to the west?
Is Martifer.
Okay.
Here is a map showing the two property owners who wrote in in favor of this request. Again, those property owners are immediately adjacent to the subject property. And here is an aerial photograph which simply illustrates the fact that this entire area is largely vacant in development. This is an excerpt from our Vision Plan map of the comprehensive plan. It calls for an industrial type of development in this area. As you know, when we looked at the annexation of this particular area, we did talk about the emergence of the area as an industrial hub for the city. So this type of development, the manufacturing-heavy request, is consistent with that industrial type of feel and use. Just a few photographs, again, illustrating mainly the lack of development in this area. This is looking directly at the subject property from Smith Boulevard. And this is looking across the subject property to properties at the northwest. In the background, you can actually see that highway corridor that I mentioned earlier. Speaking of Smith Boulevard, here is a view from Smith Boulevard. We look at the subject property, which is here to the right, and we're looking south down that Smith Boulevard street. And then lastly, this is looking east from the subject property, again, at some largely undeveloped areas. And considering this application today, of course, as always, you have the options of approval remanding this item to the Planning Commission for an alternative zoning classification deemed to be more appropriate or denial of the request. The current property is zoned ranch and estate. Section 303 of our zoning ordinance does require that when all property is annexed into the city, it is initially zoned ranch and estate. That is the most restrictive zoning district which we have on the books and it allows time for the proper planning of this area to take place. And that's exactly what we did with the proponent through this process. As always, you have seven criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance to consider this request and weigh it against the different plans and policies that we have in place, as well as the surrounding area and any effects that could be generated by the zoning ordinance. There were some excerpts from the comprehensive plan which were included in your staff report and background. These speak to the types of principles that would organize these types of uses, that being heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing uses, and clustering those appropriately rather than spreading those in a scattered manner throughout the city. This type of request, again, fits into that principle. It also talks about establishing areas of transition between commercial areas and nearby neighborhoods. In this particular request, we did an analysis of the closest residential areas in the vicinity of the property. To the south, it's at least a half a mile to the nearest residence. To the west or northwest, that would be one-third of a mile. Again, it is consistent and compatible with both the Vision Plan map, our recent discussions of annexation, as well as the comprehensive plan. Yes, sir?
Let me check on something. Do you have questions on this?
I left Ross one.
Does anyone want to see more of this presentation?
I'll make a motion to...
I have just one, one quick question. I saw the two in favor, but I don't have the opposition. What were the reasons?
We didn't have any in opposition.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said two.
She said no, none in opposition?
Correct.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Hersfeld, a second from Mr. Adams to approve as presented. Are there further questions? Okay, have public input on this item? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Excellent job, Ms. Fawer.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A.J., so those, the red parcels that you showed, those aren't opposition?
We had none in opposition for this particular request. We had two green properties. Those indicated the property owners in favor.
So it's just me seeing red? Okay.
I'm not sure why you're seeing red, but it wasn't because of opposition.
Counseling? 19, please. Consideration of authorizing an appeal of Planning Commission's decision to deny case number Z-12-11. And this is related to a two-family residential property trying to move to neighborhood commercial. The presentation is, again, by our planning manager, A.J. Fawer.
Thank you, Mayor. In this particular request, we sent out 15 notifications. We did receive two and these were in opposition of the request. So you will see those in red when we get to that map in just a moment. These two letters of opposition were, again, included in your background reports. And if you have any questions about that, we can certainly come back to those in a moment. First, by taking a look at the subject property, I can show you where that's oriented. This is in the south-central part of San Angelo. Just to the north, you can see the remnants, some pieces of the Concho River, and again, downtown just north of that. This particular property is located at the intersection of Avenue L and Hill Street. And here's a closer look at those properties with the two letters that we received in opposition indicated in red, one across the alley to the south and one directly across Avenue L to the north. Here is an aerial photograph showing the particular area. We'll talk a little more about the area in depth in just a moment, but you can see from this particular vantage point that there is a neighborhood that is well-established and has been in place for some time. We've actually done the research to determine that this neighborhood has been in existence and the zoning for residential has been in existence since 1954 with our first and initial zoning map. This is a zoning map excerpt and we've shown you a different view than what you're used to seeing, just to illustrate some of the areas and the conflicts at work in the larger sort of area around this. To the north, you see that we have a large manufacturing zone that has been in place since, again, 1954. That developed largely because of the railroad line running through this portion of the city and remains to this day to be zoned manufacturing, although there's very few actual manufacturing activities that you'll find in that zoning district. The dark purple that you see that wraps around this particular neighborhood that we're talking about today is zoned our CGCH, which is our combination general and heavy commercial zoning district. Again, a zoning district of very high intensity. However, as you start to survey this particular zoning district in this area, you would notice that there are a large number of residential homes that have developed within the CGCH zoning. So when we're looking at this type of anomaly within the city, it generally suggests to us that we have more retail zoning than we actually need in place in this particular area because it has continued to develop despite the zoning as a residential neighborhood. This is an excerpt from our Vision Plan map. The yellow denotes a neighborhood classification. So again, as we're looking at zoning requests and special use and conditional use requests, we're looking at things that are consistent with a residential type of usage. A few photographs to show you the area in question. This is looking northward from the subject property across West Avenue L. So again, we did have a letter in opposition that is in this block shown in the foreground of the photo. And then we take a turn and look eastward at the surrounding neighborhood. Again, you can see Avenue L in the far-left portion of the photograph and you start to see that beginning of that neighborhood district. This is turning and looking south from that subject property. Again, as you can see, there are a large number of residential homes which are in place there. And then lastly, we're looking west from the subject property. This is a small restaurant which is also owned by the proponent on this particular case, as well as two other lots that we'll talk about in just a moment on the opposite side of this restaurant. Lastly, this is another vantage point looking south, and these are the two lots that I just mentioned. We have a lot with a home here that we understand is being used for storage purposes, as well as a vacant lot which is also owned by the proponent. The reason that we bring this up in your staff report is to let you know that this particular vacant lot, which is essentially the same size as the lot in question for the rezoning prospect, is actually a currently zoned CGCH and would today, with no modifications, allow the usage which the proponent is looking to use. Again, the options of this request is the one before. You can approve this request, remand it to the Planning Commission, or deny the zone change request. We've talked a little bit about the area, so I won't go through that again. We did, as we did in the previous case, pull out some different excerpts from the comprehensive plan which speak to this particular request. Those, again, emphasize the feeling of a neighborhood requiring buffers and transitions from that neighborhood into more of a commercial feel and promoting the viability of those neighborhoods. Some other excerpts that we found that were very particular to this type of request. There is a good deal of articulation in the beginning of our comprehensive plan about neighborhoods that are outside the core of our city, such as this, and that are more irregular in form and consistently disconnected. And you can see from the zoning map excerpt I showed you earlier that it is essentially a neighborhood disconnected from other types of residential usage and transition. It immediately abuts on three of its four sides, very intensive commercial activity. The experience of other communities with disconnected neighborhoods is an inability to hold value over time and an accelerated rate of decay in infrastructure and improvements. So that is some of the rationale, both behind the planning staff's look at this request and utilizing the direct wording of the comprehensive plan which you've approved. We also talk about the cautionary thing that we wanted to make you think about, which is closing off these neighborhoods can make the more islands, if you will, that are very separated from any other type of comparable activity. And over time, we can see that contribute to the deterioration of a neighborhood. There is a large amount of residential development within that existing commercial strip zoning, which I mentioned earlier. And to sum up, again, we simply compared this to the Vision Plan map. We found that it's not compatible with that map and that it's not compatible with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We also looked at some of the existing conditions in place today. The existing business that I mentioned earlier, also owned by the proponent, is one that is in operation and appears to be successful. However, we have to think about the fact that there is a lack of parking in this particular area. So we also have to think about the introduction of traffic that such a commercial usage could bring into this neighborhood. And so we ask you to think about that. There are other options for this request. As we mentioned before in the staff report, there are already a wide variety of vacant properties that are zoned both neighborhood commercial and CGCH, which are in the immediate area, that are currently zoned appropriately for this type of usage. We also mentioned that the applicant has a vacant commercial lot under their ownership currently that's already zoned appropriately and appears to be the same side. Yes, Mr. Alexander?
How many votes is this going to take to pass?
It requires a supermajority.
Six votes?
Six of seven.
Is there anybody else here that just can't see this happening?
I'm sorry.
I can't, I can't see voting for this. This is simple to me. This is a spot zoning...
Okay, let me make sure...
I just, we can go on, but I...
Make, okay.
This is pretty simple to me, so...
A little different approach than asking for what their vote's going to be, which is not so appropriate, would be to say, is anyone else ready for us to make a motion on this item?
There you go. We're going a long time and this is, personally for me, is not a close call. And is anybody else willing to go forward?
Would you like to make a motion to deny?
I'd like to make a motion to deny. And I'll second that denotion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Adams to deny the request. I have a second from Mr. Alexander to deny the request. Is there further information you'd like from the presentation?
Yes. I would, I would like to hear from the proponent, but also, the property that they own across the street, you said it zones CGCH?
Correct.
I didn't see that on, am I colorblind again or...
That's okay. Let me go back to that slide for you.
I saw yellow this time.
Okay, here is the zoning map and I apologize, it looks like we're missing a label. But this area within the dark lines here from Avenue L that go half a block to the south, that area is zoned CGCH. The remainder of this, including the subject property, is zoned for that two-family residential. And the lots that we're talking about are five and six.
That they own? The lot you're...
The business in question is on Lot 7. There's a home on Lot 6. Again, we understand that that's used as storage and then Lot 5 is vacant.
So, yeah, north of Avenue L, their property, that is CGCH?
South of Avenue L.
But I'm talking about, I thought you said north, their property...
No, no. South of Avenue L. Again, just west of the property in question.
The property that they own, north of Avenue L?
The property that they own is south of Avenue L.
I know that, but you said they also owned a property across the street north on Avenue L.
Then I misspoke. It's actually lots 5, 6, and 7 that the proponent owns.
So the one I was looking at is Lot 15 north of Avenue L. What is that? They own that?
We had two letters that we received in opposition of the request. One was this Lot 16 here to the north, and that might have been the one that I referenced. And then we also had Lot 14 to the south across the alley that was also in opposition.
And I also would like to hear from the proponent because, you know, we're voting something down that we don't even know unless you read your notes what it is exactly you want to do there. So if we could, I'd like to hear from him.
Of course, without question. Let me see if there's any other question on the presentation, Mr. Silves, and then I'll bring that proponent up. Is there any other question on the presentation? Okay. Sir, please come up and let Mr. Silves ask you some questions. Okay, Mr. Silves?
Mr. Hockel, I just want to know exactly what it is. The idea is to, you know, you're trying to revitalize the area. I don't know how long that lot has been empty, but I know it's been a long time.
It's been a long time. And I understand where y'all are going for the city planning business.
And you can change my mind.
And you can change my mind.
I'm not, I'm going to try.
Okay.
And I'm going to try.
And go ahead and.
Let me speak also.
Sure. Go ahead and introduce yourself also.
I'm David Hockel. My father owns this lot. We, as a family, all own it. We do have the restaurant across the street, and then I have a business across the street. Yes, we have that lot where we're trying to change the zone. It is a corner lot.
Ms. Palmer, can you hear okay?
I'm sorry? This better?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And it is a corner lot. And as in people in business, a corner lot always has better access, and it's a better place to probably be. What we're trying to do is build like a little recreation hall, a little banquet hall. People can have meetings, small parties, or, as we know, a lot of people will have a Zumba, and they want to have places for Zumba. And people have been asking me, you ought to try to do something like that, and we have been thinking about that. But this is kind of a building that's up from Highland and Hill, the one I'm showing you right here. And this is right down from Mayfield. This is something similar that I want to do, but not quite as much. It's not going to be very big. The parking will not be a problem, because the parking, that's empty lot, and then I'm willing to knock another house down, which makes the place a lot nicer. The majority of the thing, we're on a four-lane on Avenue L, so there's going to be busy traffic already. And then, of course, there's a snow cone stand on Avenue N, and plus there's Mrs. Reels on Avenue N. That's more business right there. And then up beside, on Avenue Hill, heading north, of course, we got Harrison Roofing. We got a roofing company that does industrial. We also got the food bank, and we also got Mayfield Paper. And then the catty corner lot where I'm trying to build, let me see if I can move this here. See, there's one building on Washington. That's a two-lane highway, and that's in a neighborhood. That's something that they're doing also. So I don't see, there's a lot on Avenue N and Hill. There's that, and then across the street is Mrs. Reels. And that's a two, that's a four-lane on Avenue N, and plus a two-lane in between and four-lane back there. I don't see how we cross some traffic congestion. There's our lot, the restaurants on the other side. Of course, we do have people park on that lot, and I'm sure some of y'all may have gone there and parked there, too. The houses next to them, most of them are rent houses. Rent houses, empty lots. There's Victory Outreach Church. There's another church, what I wasn't aware of, up the street, a block on the other end. Tough Shine, Santa Fe Junction, Dollar Store, Roxy, and there's, I think that's probably about it. The most, the majority of that, up and down that street, are empty lots. I don't know if I'll cause a domino effect to business. This is not the type of business that is going to be open every day. This is going to be something just for meetings. If somebody want to do like a benefit for somebody, I want to have like a small place where they can barbecue in a small kitchen. I'm not asking for much. Yes, we do own the other property, and it's zoned, but, you know, it's a middle property and next to, it just wouldn't be a good location for that, but it'll be a great parking lot place. And it does have the same side of, or the same block and the same footage probably of this lot. So they can park across the street there. Then I'm willing to knock down another house that I use as storage, which I'm planning to do anyway, and I can make that as parking across the street.
Where is that house? Where is that house located? Going your way to knock down?
It is, let me see if I have it on here. It's kind of back over here, between here, across the street from the alley.
Just a second, sir. Mr. Hockel?
Yes, sir.
Would you please bring up the photo one and let him hopefully help us by using the mouse to show us which properties he's talking about? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir. I know exactly what you're talking about.
That's what I'm after, but can you do the one that's an actual, I'm sorry, Ms. Palmer, do you mind doing the one that's an actual kind of photo look at it?
Oh, the aerial.
The satellite, there you go. There you go. Thank you.
All right, here's a lot. Where's the mouse?
Can y'all see that okay?
Can y'all see the mouse?
Yeah. He's got the mouse. He's got the mouse, we're okay?
Okay. Let me see. Okay, here's the mouse. This, this right here, this house right there, we will knock down. That will get, give mortal, empty space on the lot. I can still use this as storage, and then I got this whole place right here. Of course, it would have to be paved. And all right here, which would make a great, an L shape right here, back down here, it comes from here to here, and then it'll be across the street from there. I would think that would be sufficient amount of parking.
You talked about, it sounded like you talked about knocking down two houses. Is that what you said?
Possibly, yeah.
And what, two houses? I saw one just then, what was the second one you were considering?
The one that she talked about over here was the one that y'all saw in the photograph, would be right here. We got a house back here in this other corner, we're using as storage, and then we got another one that we're using as storage right here, that's the one I plan on knocking down to begin with, the first one. And that's going to create another empty lot, right there to the street facing Hill.
The building that you're trying to put up, what, how big are you looking at? What capacity?
Whatever the city would allow me to build in there, but also how much money the bank's willing to give me on top of that. But I mean, this is something that ain't going to happen overnight. I mean, it's going to be financing involved, get things going. It's just, it's just, we've got to get first, do this first, hurt it first.
Mr. Hockel, the part that's already zoned, you know where that empty lot is?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about paving?
Mm-hmm, right here.
Yes, sir. And, you know, and the house in the front of the lot next to it, that house? You're saying you might be willing to knock down?
Not this one. This one's a pretty good house, because it's a pretty good size.
Well, which one?
The, the one next to the restaurant, behind the restaurant, right here?
Yes.
No, I wouldn't be willing to knock that down.
Okay, I thought that's the one you said.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
You know, I appreciate what you're trying to do. If you can curtail the traffic that we seem to be worried about and pave parking back there, that empty lot, you know, I have no problem with. Again, I think you're just, I think it's shot in the arm for the neighborhood. You know, I've lived in that neighborhood for years. I don't anymore, but when I was growing up, and, and again, that lot has been empty forever that I can remember of, so I, I'm in favor, is what I want to say. It's just, if you can just revitalize that area, that little stretch of highway there, I don't see what.
And I know catty corner, nothing's going to be built over here.
Oh, no.
Because that's just a old dump ground back in the old days.
Having those woods underground over there, yeah.
Yeah. Unless somebody's got deep pockets and they excavate all that, but, I mean.
Okay. Mr. Hockel, and Mr. Morrison has comments or questions?
Well, I'll just say that I've been to eat with you at Aunt Maggie's, and I want to compliment you on what you and your parents have done over there, because you have really cleaned that area up. You've got a good restaurant.
Thank you.
And I have, I don't see that this is anything but good for the neighborhood. And if there was no other commercial business in this area, I would look at it differently. But there's commercial businesses up and down L, up and downhill, right across the street from you is all commercial.
All four lanes?
All four lanes. I don't see any reason to deny a man to try and get in and build something that improves the neighborhood. And from the looks of your restaurant and what you have done with that restaurant, I know that it will be an improvement, because you do things right.
Yeah, and clean the lots and everything. We always clean the lots.
I have no problem at all with this.
Other than not having code enforcement, we never had it, but there's always, I always call code enforcement up and down the alley, because a lot of the, most of them are renters, and they don't clean their stuff.
Well, you very well cleaned your area.
And the bottom line, you're.
Sometimes I got to clean their stuff, too.
The bottom line is, just like that sign says, you're trying to make us the most desirable city, so if that's what it takes, man.
I mean, I don't know if it's, we're in favor of the city planning vision, but I know the city planning vision favors more downtown, but not my area, but I'm sure the city planning vision will change up later down in the future, too, so.
But the responses against did not come from renters. One family has lived in their home for 30 years.
Yeah, and they were here, and they were here.
And another family has lived in their home for at least a generation. So for us to say that the majority of the people, just because the majority of the people are renters, does not negate the fact that we need to take into consideration those that do have an investment in their homes. And revitalization is something that takes place for the great, for the better good of a community, and not for the better good of an individual or individual group of people.
And understanding that there were, one of them was here at his zoning board, but she never spoke up.
Okay. Other questions for the gentleman or about the presentation? Other public input? Okay, I have a motion to deny and a second to deny, so I'm ready to call for that vote. Is there any change in the motion before I call for the vote? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those that are, well, the other side of the coin, nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Change my vote.
Okay.
Change my vote.
I have one, two, three nays.
To approve it.
They? I can't believe you didn't take your motion.
To allow it.
These are three.
I have. Mr. Mitters, I have four votes to deny.
Thanks for helping.
Okay?
We tried, David.
One, two, three, four votes to deny. I have three votes, one, two, three votes to approve, okay? So this is denied by the council. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward. Were you able to follow that, Mr. Mitters? Did I get it done? Okay. Item number 20, please. This is a first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, the City of San Angelo Development Corporation. And this is what, comprehensive plan zoning change or look, and it's a presentation by Planning Manager A.J. Favre.
Thank you.
Ms. Favre, let me have one second, please.
Sure.
You know, I can save us some time. I'd make a motion to approve this, we know what it's about.
I'd like to hear a little bit.
Like to hear a little bit, okay? Move forward with your presentation, please.
Okay, I'll try to keep it brief.
I have a motion. We'll get the second here in a little bit, maybe.
Essentially, what this request would accomplish would be to.
I'll second it, just to.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's finish then at least part of the presentation and.
Would essentially be to allow a special use for this property that would augment the underlying zoning, not change the underlying zoning, and would allow for the category in our zoning district known as a major entertainment event. There were two notifications required to be sent out on this request. We received none in favor or in opposition of the request. And just for the public, the property that we're talking about is shown on the slide here. This is near the interchange of North US Highway 67 and 87. This is just south of North US Highway 67, just north of the area known as the industrial park to the south here. This is a rather large tract that is currently vacant, as you can see by the aerial photograph. And here is the excerpt from the vision plan map for the comprehensive plan, which calls for this area to be a mixture of something that would be industrial in nature or commercial in nature. Again, the specific request is not inherently industrial, but it is inherently commercial. And again, it would augment the underlying zoning, not change that. We have a few photographs. I'm just going to flip through those quickly, and you can stop me if you'd like to see anything. Again, the area is largely vacant. Most people are familiar with the highway view, which I'm showing you here. And again, you can see the signage. You have Howard College in the background. This is heading north out of town, and the property is zoned, an underlying zoning district of light manufacturing in nature. The entertainment event specific to this request would be for a racetrack, a dirt racetrack, which you've all been involved in the discussions on, and we do have some other staff members here that can speak to the request if we need that. The dominant land ownership in the area is the City of San Angelo on three of the four sides of the property. To the south, we do have a tenant, Angelo Archives, who we have worked with, and we have sent staff out to visit with the owner about this particular request. The conditions of this request, which we're allowed to place to better make this a consistent land use that would work for the area, would be twofold. One of those would be to plan some sound mitigation by leaving a minimum of 100 feet of vegetation on the areas surrounding the track, both to the west along the highway and to the south, buffering the industrial park. We've done some research on sound mitigation and found that this distance is sufficient. We also looked very carefully at how we laid out the proposal, the proposed layout. It's my understanding that this is not finalized, but you can see that the track itself is located in the centralmost part of this tract, farthest away from the industrial park to the south, and as far as conceivable from the highway to the northwest, across which is a residential neighborhood. We've not had much feedback on this particular request. We also have a second condition that we would have placed that would state that any potable water could not be used for dust mitigation unless the city council specifically allows that to be done. There are plans for stormwater features to be put into place. We know that there's a problem in place today with some of the drainage, and the water that would be accumulated from this drainage would be used in place of potable water to wet down the track. Rick, do you want to add anything?
If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this item. It looks like we're, we're okay. Oh, I will do public comment, sir. I'm just first, again, first checking up here, then I'll go to the public comment. Okay? Is there any further question or comment up here? Sir, please, come on up for public comment.
My name's Doug Knoll. I own Angelo Archives. I am the only occupant of that park, and I'm happy about that. I'd like to see some more, but I want it to be the right thing. I've invested lots of money, currently expanding. I'm trying to do my part, provide jobs and secure business and keep it nice, and I have a couple of problems with the racetrack. The concept, I think, is great. I'm never against anything that brings tourism and money to San Angelo, never have been, never will be. But here's the problem. Maybe this is already a done deal, because I noticed they already have cut the road from Gateway over. If it's a done deal, I'm not wasting my time.
It's not a done deal. The.
Oh, so you're just cutting roads for the sheer joy of it?
No, Coast City C asked to be able to view the property. It was very, if you, if you had been out there, and I'm sure you've seen it, it was very dense as far as being able to drive through it. So Coast City C feels that it's important to clear the property regardless of this goes in or not, because of the mass amount of mesquite trees out there.
The Egress excess, oh, that, that's, you know, they're coming off of 67, and they're going to come down Gateway, which goes right in front of my place. I really don't have a lot of problem with that, okay? The problem is, I'm building new buildings right now. I'm conforming to city code. I got to build a cement sidewalk for a fire truck to drive on in case there's a fire that a fire truck won't fit on. It's the dumbest thing I've ever heard in my life. You're going to go over and build Caliche roads. That's against the city code, but you can exempt yourself. I have a real problem with that. That's dirt. And should there come a huge rain like two years ago, all of a sudden, people try to get out of there, and you have problems with wrecks and slipping and sliding, and the rescue vehicles can't get to it because of that road, how come you cannot abide by the code and I am so strictly controlled by the code? That's one problem. The other problem is the water. Eighty thousand gallons of water, that's what the city staff told me. They're going to build a reservoir to catch the rainwater off of 67 and out of there? You bet, and it'll work. If it ever rains, ask any farmer or rancher, how often do their tanks get filled up? Not very often. That's a pipe drain. What they're going to do is drill water wells out there. The top of the thing, nobody's mentioned that yet. They're going to take our subsurface water and pour it on this track. I don't think the citizens are going to be real happy with that. There's got to be some way, some way, somehow, to get it properly paved and to get water from someplace else that maybe Lucas needs to pay for instead of us. That's my concerns with it.
Okay, sir, I got them. Okay?
Thank you.
Do you like to respond to any of the?
I can respond to some, or A.J. can respond, and we have other staff who can answer any questions. As for the roadways, one of the stipulations that A.J. put on the requirement that went before her board was that those roadways coming into the facility will, in this case, are going to be constructed of compacted concrete. And so we, we had Brian, our fire, our fire chief, address that to make sure that those roadways are adequate to handle emergency vehicles that may need to come in to assist in any situation. So that is what has been proposed, and do you want to add to that, A.J.?
And I should have clarified this better. And that was the request that was vetted through the zoning board of adjustment, who hears the requests for variation from the city codes. They heard that at their most recent meeting, and so that was not an internal decision, that was an external board decision, which they did approve that variance for.
As for the tank issue, he is correct. The intention is to capture stormwater that comes off of the highway, and also, I think this gentleman had brought to our attention that there was a stormwater issue at his property as well, potentially, and so the intent is to try and assist with that as well, to capture the stormwater, but also to assist with his property where they may[1685.29]
also to assist with his property where they may have some flooding issues or any further development to address that. And so Clinton may be here. He can address that topic. They are the ones who are working on that design. The intent is also that it would be used, as he said, for watering down the track. If necessary to augment that, yes, we would need to look at drilling a well to augment that if needed. From Clinton's projections, he's very practical in assuming that they will be able to get enough water from the stormwater retention pond.
I have a question for you, Rick.
Yes.
If we have to drill a well and use water, whose water would we be using?
There are already, at this particular location, there's about seven wells that have been drilled. Those were drilled primarily for the monitoring back when we had the Ethicon issue going on. So those exist. Those are not necessarily all cleared for being usable, so we would want to drill one in a zone. They have a plume area that they had defined. We'd want it to drill one outside of that plume. As far as the expense of piping or those kind of things, that can either be borne by Lucas or in paying the electric bill, those kind of things. That's all in how we structure the contract. And I think that's all that I had written down.
I have a question. You mentioned "we" would have to drill a well. Why "we"?
It's all in how we structure the contract. That has not been decided by council yet. That will be coming back to y'all afterwards. So that is something that either we could require Lucas to do if they so choose, or if it is beneficial to the city in some form, then we could choose to do that. But that is yet to be decided. So "we" being whoever that is.
Okay.
I'm gonna pull my motion. That man made some very valid points. If I'm gonna make a motion, it is going to be that this development go exactly according to the plans and the rules and the restrictions that everyone else that builds anything in this city must go by. And I would say that they must use stormwater only, that they will not be able to drill a water well, because that's a very real problem, and these octifers are suffering already. And it doesn't make sense to take water out of the octifer that people are trying to drink and pour it on a racetrack. So I'm gonna pull my motion as I stated it.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Sir, I thought you wanted to say something else.
Well, I was just wondering, is it okay if we can buy some crushed cement and finish my lot now?
It's a roller-compacted, it is a roadway, so...
Is it roller-compacted?
Can I use it?
Yes, sir. You could use it.
Thank you.
It is a road surface that we've used out on Coliseum Drive or out there on...
Great Creek Road and 50th Street.
By the way, this guy right here, they've been really good to me, so Mr. Sneben and him.
I don't have a complaint one with them. Not complaint. It's not with the project, it's with the methodology.
Okay.
If I could clarify, the construction of the roadway is not roller-compacted concrete, it's crushed concrete from our airport reconstruction project. It's very similar to grade-two base material. It doesn't have as many fines in it, so when you put it in place, it's not as subject to rutting and so forth. And the way we're designing the roadway with the process subgrade, about eight to 10 inches of this material, we've calculated that it will support emergency access vehicles up to the weight of those in our fire department. I was just visiting with Chief Dunn, and he mentioned that the Lucas Oil folks have a lot of their own emergency response vehicles, so I'm not sure exactly how we're going to support this. And if I could add on the detention pond, there is an existing drainage issue out on site that affects Angelo Archives and other lots in the area. And part of that we're going to address with the construction of the detention pond. We're going to be able to intercept about a five-year storm event and store that. Secondly, we are beginning discussions with Texas Department of Transportation, who has a drainage easement from a culvert that goes under 67 and a channel that runs parallel to the industrial district, Angelo Archives. Talking to them about maintaining that. It's grown up right now. It's not, doesn't flow at capacity. The water moves out of that channel into other areas. So as we move through this in conjunction with that detention pond construction, we will also be cleaning up and regrading that channel.
I think one of the key questions, Mr. Bailey, is the construction of the road. And so go back to the map, please, and show us where a road would be put in, what materials would be used on that road again, even though you just did, and whether or not we would allow someone else to do that as part of developing something in the city limits.
And A.J., you may want to speak to the board's reasoning for not wanting mass pavement and so forth.
Right in there, somewhere in there. That one would be fine.
Okay, and the roads that we're looking at, I'm gonna try to do this here. We have an access point off of 67 right here, and then another one planned a little bit further down. And basically, you have a road that comes down...
Where's the gentleman's business?
Yeah, located right down here.
So at this point, you're not intent on bringing people onto and off of that property by his business, or not?
Potentially. That has not been decided completely as far as how the facility will be accessed by the public.
But there will be an entrance and exit there as well as on 67.
Right here. Right, if you'll watch...
So one or two on 67 and one there.
Correct.
Right, and if you'll watch my pointer, this road will continue on up and around and connect here. And then additionally, there will be a road coming through this area.
Okay.
About 6,500 feet of 30-foot-wide roadway.
Roadway defined as...
Roadway defined as an all-weather surface that can be accessed even by emergency access vehicles if needed during even a weather event.
So the collection pond would be composed of the components you just described, the...
Crushed concrete.
Crushed concrete.
Right, which is very similar to our grade-two base, which is the base course material that we use on standard asphalt construction for roadways in San Angelo and subdivisions throughout San Angelo. Without any surface course, without a seal coat on top of it, without asphalt on top of it, just that crushed concrete construction. And Councilman Silas, the detention pond would be located in this general area, and we would be pulling water off of this secondary channel right here that runs in front of the old Taylor Publishing Building. So just right here in this area.
A.J., will you also cover those? Y'all put some restrictions on this property as well, things that must happen as far as buffer zones and this and that.
Correct. As you all may be somewhat familiar with, when we go through the subdivision process of subdividing property, that is generally the point at which road construction is triggered, both in terms of dedication and in terms of improvements of those roads. This particular property meets our subdivision ordinance requirement, which actually grants an exemption to the need for subdividing properties if the property is over five acres in size. So based on the size of this particular property, those typical requirements of the subdivision ordinance do not apply. Our zoning ordinance does require that required off-street parking that is provided for any type of business or even residential usage must be paved, and the connection to the public right-of-way also be paved. Co-City C acted as the applicant and filed an application for a variance from that requirement, which was vetted as all variance requests are required through the Texas Local Government Code through the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Zoning Board of Adjustment looked at several factors. Based on the discussion, it seemed like one of the major factors was the frequency, or rather infrequency, of usage for this particular site. They're feeling that the amount of pavement that would be required for something this large, that would only be used a handful of times a year, might not be an efficient expenditure and an efficient way of developing land. That seemed to be kind of the overarching theme of their discussion. So that was vetted through that commission, who then turned around and granted this variance request, essentially releasing that responsibility from the city for this particular project.
So we're looking at this track being used three, maybe four, times a year, correct?
Yeah, there would be two, propose two more major events, the off-road and the tractor pull. And then what they typically do in communities, what they would do here as well is run a regional series, and they usually run four to six regional events a year as well, those being much smaller than those two major events.
Half a dozen?
You do have a difference in firefighting operations. As owner of Angelo Archives stated there, what we would do for him would be structural operations, where the trucks set up and we're stationary and pumping this development out here. From what I saw, there is no structures other than a bleachers with concrete, so we have no structural firefighting operations out there. Also with this, Lucas Oil and these type of events generally bring in their own emergency crews. I have firefighters that work the Dallas Motorplex Speedway and Phoenix International Speedway. They volunteer to do that. These people have their own specialty equipment, and they bring it in with them, mainly because it's the racers that they're gonna be taking care of out there on the dirt. Fire trucks are not gonna get out there in the middle of this hilly dirt where they're racing. So they bring their stuff in to take care of those guys. They may ask us for an ambulance, but that's probably the extent of what I see for emergency operations for the city. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Sorry, Ms. Farmer.
I'd like, just one point that I wanted to make. Clinton, did I hear you correctly when you said we're designing, you're doing the engineering design work for this, for the roads and the track?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make that very, very clear for a subject that's coming up later with reference to these.
Sure.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
In the so-called contract with Lucas, does it talk about drilling wells?
There is no contract yet in place, because that has not come to council. So those are things that, once we jump through these hurdles to see whether or not it worked with the community. Legal is working with us right now and compiling a draft for us to look at and for us to forward to Lucas and then for us to bring to council as a proposal. So those are things that are not in place yet.
But they, I mean, is that what we're looking at doing, including them able to drill wells out there, or...
My opinion is that the stormwater will most likely cover it, but I think we are foolish not to plan for a backup. I like to have backups. And so my opinion is, is that you should have a well, whether the city drills it or whether they drill it, as a backup source of water if you need to augment the stormwater in any way.
Now, that could also be addressed with the, we talked about the secondary affluent parks and such. I mean, it could be part of that whole program, too.
Yes, same does.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
Isn't there city water available out there?
Yes, you could do that as well, but, and that could be your backup source. I just, my approach was to try to avoid using city water, but that would be an option as well.
I would rather have the city water. That way, they're going to be bound by the same drought, one, two, and three, that everyone else is. It's not gonna go over well if we're in drought two or three, and they're out there pouring well water on the dirt, and people here can't even waters. I don't want them to be able to drill wells. I'd rather have, own city water and be bound by the same provisions that everyone else. And they also ought to be bound by the same regulations that every other developer in this city has to face. We shouldn't be allowing them to build a different kind of road than someone else would build. That's not fair to our citizens.
For the sake of time, I think that that's a different discussion. The contract hasn't even been entered into yet. Right now, a contract doesn't exist. There's definitely some things that need to be considered, but I think we need to stay focused on what we're dealing with right here.
Okay, you guys are making a great debate and doing a fine job.
I have one additional question.
Okay. One of the things that I think is in line with what Mr. Adams is saying, I think I'm hearing or feeling two things, listening to you. One is, we'll get to a vote on a special use or not. After that, I think that this is a type of item that, because it's the first time you're seeing it as a council, you have more questions than you have answers. I don't think it's going to prevent us from getting where we want to go to get to the vote on the special use. I think I would request of staff that this become something along the lines of a workshop item, so everybody has some opportunity to give questions and answers and learn and weigh in on what they think is important. And you're gonna get input, you've already heard input from Councilman Hirschfeld about why couldn't we make sure that the, as we're doing this project on reclamation of water, why couldn't that be the backup instead of drilling wells and so forth? So there's an opportunity here for a lot of give and take on this and a lot of information to be shared. But today, I'm gonna see if I can get us to a vote on the special use permit, followed by a workshop session in the future before any action is taken on that contract, okay? So that there's plenty of opportunity to cover a lot of ground on those things. Now, Mr. Silas.
Maybe I'm jumping the gun, Rick, but I didn't get to go and visit their new tracks out there, wherever it was, Phoenix or California, wherever. But did you happen to ask them how much water a facility like that uses? I mean, you could imagine restrooms, you know, sure, I can...
Actually, they use, at all their facilities, they use porta-potties.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So they would like, in this particular case, there is a sewer line that runs by this property, which is not the norm in a lot of their cases. So a goal would be, in the future, to potentially build restrooms, which would make it a nicer facility. But they use porta-potties, and as for the water, I think Clinton has a good idea on that, what they use per event. And actually, what they, what he's calculating on is their worst-case scenario in the driest climate, which is not even close to where we are, but he can give you that information.
Right. The numbers that we saw were about 1.7 million gallons of water used in a week's time on the track. And we've designed the detention pond to store roughly twice that amount. In case we get a rain at a time well ahead of the event, we can store more. We'll be a lined pond, so it will hold water longer, although it will still be subject to evaporation.
And those are very, very arid climates we're talking about.
So what do they use, the 1.7 million? Do they water down the track, or what? I'm guessing...
They constantly, the moisture content in the track needs to be real specific as far as for their turns and jumps and those kind of things. In the areas where we've visited, and of course, it's very desert, and so when they go into it, as opposed to here, you know, it depends on the year, but a lot of times we have a different soil, obviously, than they do, so you'll have more soil moisture to begin with. So this is based on the worst extreme.
I think, I think, I mean, I'm gonna let them say, because I don't know. I haven't visited any of these either. But I think it's like following somebody down a dirt road on a ranch. If they don't wet the thing down, they can't have a race because of the amount of dirt and dust that would be in the air and the danger that there would be for the drivers. So I think if you, kind of from that perspective, you can see why they wet the track down, if it's a dirt track. And I know from years ago, out here on 2105, they wet the track down before they, you know, as part of a dirt track race. Anyway, is there further question or input on this track and the special use permit only, not the rest of this? Because I think we can see there's some concern that this be revisited, and the council get to have some input consistent with what the neighbor is concerned about and so forth. So I don't think we're really trying to give approval to just move forth and do what we like. We're trying to talk about, should we give a special use permit and bring it back for further discussion about how we move it forward? So I have a motion in a second to do that. Do I have any further questions? Do I have any further public comment? Okay. Vote on the special use permit. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please hear us clearly, okay? We need to see a lot more about this as we move it forward. Folks, I've got 22, I think, is the next one. And again, I'm trying to let folks get out of here before lunch, so I'm gonna hold us a little into the noon hour. This is item number 22. This is consideration of adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a revocable license agreement for an awning. And we have a presentation by our planning manager, A.J. Favre.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this one short. This is a request that's similar to some of the requests that you've visited in recent months, allowing placements of awnings. Until today, we have seen, I believe, all of the requests that have come to you tend to be located in the downtown district specifically. This particular request is somewhat out of the downtown area, but the request itself is very consistent. It is the same type of agreement that we've used with these other types of requests. There are no notifications required with it. It is simply an approval by you, the council, because the awning in this particular case would extend somewhat into the public right-of-way, and so the city council has exclusive ability to give permission or to deny permission for those types of arrangements. The property is on East Avenue K, located between Orient Street and South Oaks Street. And very quickly, we do have some site plans and some specific drawings, which are included in your background report. But what is probably the most illustrative for you is this particular slide, which shows the canopy that is desired to be placed by the owner of this business along their property. This is the area in question. This is looking east down Avenue K, and the subject property of this request is the Candyland Facility, which is located in the right of the picture. And here's a photograph looking straight ahead at that picture. So again, the canopy would run the entire length of the front of the structure. The front of the structure, as you can see by one of our slides, bear with me just a moment, the building itself actually extends to the front property line. So approximately 10 feet of this awning that is desired to be placed would extend into the public right-of-way. However, it would not extend so far that it would be within the street itself. And so this particular...
It'll cover the sidewalk, but it will not enter the street or get out to the curb.
You are correct. And let me go back to that drawing for just a moment. And here's a drawing again of what that canopy is expected to look like. The license agreement, which was in your background report and which has been reviewed by our legal staff, again, is consistent with the past requests that you've had. It is a revocable license agreement, and in this case, staff does recommend approval of the request. We do have proponents in the audience, and if you have any questions, I can take those now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
My ears are playing tricks. I know Mr. Hirschfeld made a motion.
Ha.
I think Mr. Silas edged Mr. Adams on them seconds, so...
Mr. Silva, second. And would you guys like to see more of this presentation? Do you have questions on the presentation?
I'm sorry, it's mine.
I'd just like to add that, I'd like to applaud Mr. Melendez for what he's done to that area, to the buildings. I mean, it's gone from a building that was battered and beat up and to now, you look at that facility, it's an awesome, professional-looking, very nice facility, so, thank you, sir.
Next question on this, then, is, is there any public input before I call for the vote? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move forward, then, to item number 25.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Our next item is consideration of essentially a refinancing to capture the benefit of lower interest rates. Back in 2005, the city issued bonds that the Development Corp, for the benefit of the Development Corporation, with the Development Corporation agreeing to make the debt service payments to pay off those bonds. We have an opportunity to refinance and save some money. Actually, the savings will flow to the Development Corporation, since they fund the debt service. But to walk us through that are here today from Specialized Public Finance are Vince Viall and Paul Jason.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor and Council members, Mr. Valenzuela, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Vince Viall with Specialized Public Finance. As Michael has indicated, we have an opportunity to look at refinancing the Series 2005 COs the cities issued at a lower interest rate. Currently, some handouts are being made to y'all. And on the slide, Mike, I might need some help with this. Let's go to page four, right there. Page four is a summary page, what we could achieve in the marketplace currently if we look at trying to refinance the Series 2005 CO issue. Currently, that issue that we're looking at trying to refinance is outstanding in an interest rate of 5%. We're looking at taking that to an interest rate of approximately 1.48%. The savings on the far right side of the page would be a total of $431,000, approximately $60,000 per year. The present value benefit for that savings would be over 7%. Now, what we're looking at doing this, this afternoon at council is basically apprising you of this opportunity. We'll be coming back at a future council meeting date. You will be considering what is called a parameters ordinance. And that parameters ordinance will be the minimum savings criteria that you will approve. If you approve that parameters ordinance, that will enable us to go to the marketplace and execute that trade. Once we successfully execute that trade at or above the minimum parameters ordinance that you've passed, that will give the city manager and your CFO the authorization to accept that trade on your behalf.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, even if we vote to accept this today, we still have to come back for the parameters ordinance?
Yes, sir, we do. This is basically just bring it to your attention, so we can proceed on that basis.
Okay.
Today is concept. Presenting the concept, getting your buy-in direction to move ahead with the project. But today is just present the concept, get your approval to move ahead on the concept.
But it's the parameters ordinance that would actually, that would actually move us into the process of saving or lowering the interest rate?
That is correct.
Okay, I got it.
That is correct. We do want to spring the parameters ordinance on y'all without y'all knowing about it.
I got you, okay.
Other questions?
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to make this more than a discussion item?
Let's prove it.
Let's second it.
Okay, Mr. Morrison makes a motion. I think, I think you keep getting beat to the punch.
Yeah. I'm going to start throwing my pencil at people here in a minute.
All right. So, Mr. Alexander made the second. Again, any further questions or comments up here? Public input on this item?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
How long do we have now that we've approved this? When will we be seeing, will this be done at the next council meeting? The parameters ordinance?
There is a timeline included in the presentation under tab C, and this is a proposed timeline. We are going to be getting back to the council on November 6th for the parameters ordinance. Once you approve that parameters ordinance, like I said earlier, that will enable us to go to the marketplace and execute this trade. Right now, we're looking at trying to get this done on or about November 14th.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this process and let it move forward. Again, do I have any further public input on this item? I'll go ahead and call for this vote, then. All those in favor of approving as presented and letting the process move forward to come back as a parameters ordinance at, at a later time, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the record, I said aye first.
Let me, let me go ahead and take us into executive session at this time. We'll come back with item number 15 after the executive session. Let me see if I can get guidance on, on what we think the executive session will cover and how long it might be. Mr. Dane, you might need to help. Mr. Valenzuela.
Let's get an idea of when.
Might want to let people know we'll be back. It's 12:04.
We have two things. The, the unknown nature of the timing and the location of the executive session, of the executive, executive session today will be in this room. And so, I would anticipate that it will be at least an hour. It could be, we could be finished in an hour and 15 or an hour and 30 minutes.
So, we're going to tell folks that we anticipate being able to open back up around 1:15 or 1:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I'd like to take us into executive session. We anticipate being back at 1:15. And let me read the language and, and it is 12:04. We are entering executive session. Under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Sections 551.072 to Discuss the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property, 551.071 to Consult with an Attorney on Legal Matters Pertaining to Water Acquisition Rights, and Executive Session Item, or Section Number 551.087 to Discuss an Offer of Financial or Other Incentive to a Company Conducting Economic Development Negotiations. With item number 27, this is consideration of matters related to the 2012 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. And it includes the consideration of adopting the plan and any action related to that and discussion and possible action of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a boating access program.
Yes, Carl White with Parks and Recreation Department. This item is in two parts. They are separate items. One is not reliant on the other, so you don't have to adopt the master plan, Parks' master plan, to, to move to item B. They are separate. This presentation has quite a bit of information, but I think we can move through it pretty quickly. And if, of course, if you have any questions along, along the way, let us know. Our consultant.
Lauren Strom with Texas Outdoor Consulting is going to present the first part, and I'll present the second part.
Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon. I'm Lauren Strom, as Carl said, and I am with Texas Outdoors Consulting. We are a local recreation and resource planning firm, so I am from here. I live here, and I was very happy to be contracted to perform this plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. Like Carl said, we have a lot of information in here. I'm going to try and highlight the key things that came out of the plan. You all got a hard copy about three weeks ago, I think. It's 230 pages, so there's a lot of information there, but we're going to move through this and cover the highlights. So, I just want to talk a little bit about why planning is important. I know we, we talk about it all the time, but it, it is key to creating a vision for the future. It helps prioritize where the limited funds should be spent. It helps identify needs and gather public input, and we did get quite a bit of public input in this process. A master plan is often a requirement to receive grant funds that are out there through either federal or state sources. And the data and planning guidelines in this plan help staff make management decisions every day. You'll see in this boat ramp presentation that Carl's going to do, we looked back to the plan and said, well, what, what did the data show? You know, what, what decisions should we make based upon what the public wanted based on the data? So, I want to talk overview of the planning process that we went through. First, we did an inventory and assessment. We looked at all the park properties that are out there, all the recreation facilities, and assessed their condition. We then had some public meetings. We had some open forums. Then, we did a public survey online. Then, we did a level of service analysis, where basically, we analyzed a lot of the data that came out of the survey and compared ourselves and our level of service in San Angelo to other like-sized cities. We then came up, combining all this data, quantitative and qualitative, we came up with planning guidelines for the future, for the next five years, for the Parks Department to utilize. Then, we came up with some conceptual maps to help you visualize some of the concepts that were in the plan. And then, we discussed funding and partnership resources. Basically, where can we find funds to make these things happen? What kind of partnerships can we create? What are the national and state programs out there to help with these kind of things? So, that's what the last section covered. So, the inventory and assessment, a little bit more detail. We looked at all the city parks, all the open space, all the sports association facilities, all the recreation facilities, including the senior centers and the lake parks. For the first time, we really looked at the lake parks. The last plan in 2001 and the update in '05 breezed over the lake parks. So, we really did a, an intense analysis on those lake parks in this, in this master plan. Public participation. We had two meetings, like I talked about. We had one focusing just on general parks and recreation topics. It was held in January. We had about 27 citizens in attendance, representatives from the Contra Valley Disc Golf Association, the Little Leagues, the Santa Rita Homeowners Association, skateboarding interests, we had our Parks and Rec Advisory Board people there. And basically, we, we came away with these themes from what we were hearing from the public, and that was to focus on partnerships with stakeholder groups that are already in existence, to, to not leave them in the dark, to include them in the planning process on a, on a regular basis. They talked about non-traditional recreation elements being in need in the community. Tennis courts and basketball, and all the traditional things are fantastic, but there's really a need out there now for non-traditional elements like skate parks or BMX tracks or kayaking launches, all these things that weren't traditionally done in Parks and Rec departments. Repurposing, renovating, and consolidating park areas. That was a big theme as well. People said, let's work with what we have, let's try and renovate what we have on smaller scales to be able to get some things done. Not everything has to be a million-dollar project. Manage conflicts between user groups in parks. That was another theme. There was a lot of, not a lot, I guess, I should say, a few issues here and there, and there still are, between user groups in parks. So, they just wanted to express that they would like, you know, the Parks Department to look at those conflicts and manage them appropriately. They talked about facilitating special events, planning with the user groups. A lot of the groups are already hosting their own events in the parks with, you know, taking in money and registering people and things like that, the, the disc golf tournaments that are out there and the skate park events that are there. So, they wanted the staff to continue to facilitate those events with them, and they wanted to institute an online system to pay reservations and fees. That was a big one as well. And above all, enhance lake park facilities. That'll be a, a theme throughout the master plan, you'll see. So, then, we had a meeting specifically focusing in Lake Nazareth, because it, we wanted to get more detailed information this time around. That was in January. We had about 20 citizens in attendance, quite a bit of Lake Home, Lake Nazareth Homeowners Association members. We have some here today as well. They talked about maintaining integrity of residential lakefront neighborhoods, to consider the carrying capacity of the lake while developing, to develop a walking trail on Gun Club Hill to alleviate conflict. They wanted to focus on the north end of Mary Lee Park for restaurants and marinas. They talked about investing in boat ramp, restroom, and shower facilities in the parks. They talked a lot about enhancing the horseshoe area of Spring Crete, because it's such a popular area. A big key theme was reinvesting park admission fees into infrastructure and making sure that infrastructure gets updated over time. They also wanted to make sure that staff maintained a highly visible law enforcement presence at the parks. And they asked for encouraging commercial development in appropriate areas, which ties back into maintaining the integrity of their neighborhoods and considering car, carrying capacity and all those things when deciding where commercialization would occur. So, after the public meetings, we did a lot in the paper to still get input through the online survey. So, we got a lot of, we got a lot of front-page space, which is great, and the editors and the columnists did a lot of talk in the paper, which was good. And that really helped get people to the online survey. We had over 500 responses, which is pretty good for an online survey in San Angelo, and it asked questions on these general categories. General information, parks, trails, and open space, rec facilities, youth programming, adult programming, fees and reservations, Lake Nazareth in particular, again, and just some general demographic info to help analyze the data further, further. So, I'm going to go over a few of these here. There was 40, 39 questions in the survey, and each one is individually described in your hard copy plan, but here's a few highlights. We asked if they felt the city of San Angelo needs to acquire additional parkland. 46.1% said yes. So, that's, that's the majority of the respondents here. 31.8, no, and 22% unsure. But it's quite a big majority saying they would like additional parkland. So, where do you want the parkland? That's what we asked next. In what area of San Angelo? Northside, eastside, southside, westside? You can tell southside by far had the most responses in the purple, but not a huge difference here in terms of which side of town would, would we like parkland? So, it just shows that there's a general need all over in, in the public's perception. So, we asked then, what type of particular parkland are we talking about? And linear parks, trails, and creek corridors by far were the most popular, with 35.2% of responses.
What does that mean? I mean, help me with the linear park.
Linear parks would mean a greenway or a greenbelt along a creek or a river corridor currently. Instead of a square park, piece of property like your traditional brown park, just a city block. It's now stretched thin and long, and so, it can serve a lot more people along the way. It's, it borders a lot more land and it provides more access points to it. It's linear. Neighborhood parks was second, which would be your Meadow Creek or your Rio Vista size at 29.6%. And then, community parks came in at third, and that's your Kirby Park, Texas Bank Sports Complex. And then, you can see the list goes down. Then, we asked, do you feel there are enough multi-use trails? Hike, bike, equestrian in San Angelo? 62.6% said no. That correlates with the, we want linear parks, trails from the last question, obviously, because normally, in a linear park, you're going to have a trailway. You're going to have a place where they can run or bike, so that correlates with that. Then, we asked, which of the following rec facilities need to be added to existing parks or future parks? Hike, bike trails, again, top of the list. Very, very prominent theme throughout the data and the public meeting input. Second was a dog park. We got quite a bit of public response wanting a dog park. Third, picnic shelters and picnic pavilions. It seems that there just can't be enough. I know we have quite a few, but it's still a very high priority to people. I know that there's still a pavilion missing at Rio Contra Community Park near the Texas Bank Sports Complex. That would be a good place to add another one, given this data. Playgrounds, and again, canoe and kayak launches. These non-traditional activities are becoming very popular, and so, people are, are saying they want these, these amenities.
Laura, excuse me.
Yes.
What do the numbers at the bottom mean, the zero, one, two, three, four?
This is an aggregate score, because the, it was a sliding scale choice in, in the question, and you, you have a copy of the survey in appendix of the master plan. You could choose between very important to not important, so that creates an aggregate We asked then, would you support the city spending resources to construct and maintain a designated loop trail in proximity to Gun Club Hillside Road to alleviate traffic and a trail user conflict issue? We asked this to just get general public perception on this hot topic, because it came up in the public meetings, and this is what, this is what came out of it. 52.6% said yes. We didn't get into specifics on funding or anything like that. We just wanted to garner public support for that conceptual idea. Then, we asked, do you feel there are enough indoor gyms or multi-purpose facilities, rec centers, that kind of thing? 38.7% said yes. 41.5% said no. And then, there was about 19% who were unsure. Which of the following sports facilities need to be added? Lighted basketball courts, outdoor basketball courts was number one, followed by sand volleyball and outdoor basketball courts, and the list goes on. And this is just important for city staff to utilize when making their decisions on what kind of programs they're going to offer, what kind of facilities they're going to add in the future. So then we asked, "Okay, you want all these amenities. How do you think the city should pay for these amenities?" Fifty-four point three percent said voter-approved bond initiatives. Fifty-three point six percent said pay for improvements out of the general fund, in parentheses, sales and property taxes. That was there on the survey question so they knew where the money was coming from. And then 35.7% said user fees, basically paying a fee to use the facility, such as at the swimming pool. Another question, which was interesting to note, was if you would support the following construction of new facilities through the following means. If you'll see the first column there, new parkland and facilities. The orange is grants and the blue is the current half cent, sales tax fund. Really high response rates for those two categories of funding versus the swimming pool where the purple is user fees. And that just can be correlated with the perception that parks and trails and those kinds of things are part of the, are seen as part of the infrastructure of the city and should be paid for using general funds versus something like a swimming pool, which is perceived to be user-pay, user-fee-based. So, but across the board, obviously, grants are still popular. So then we talked about what type of particular activities would your child participate in if the rec department offered it? And this was for the staff to really get a feel of if they were doing the right things, offering the right programs, what things they might change in the future or add to be more efficient and economical and provide better service to the city. Surprisingly, of course, there was 31% that did not apply, so they skipped the question. But canoeing and kayaking, at 31%, I was shocked by this number. Carl asked me if I rigged it. I said, "No," I swear. Canoeing and kayaking, kayaking's been the fastest-growing sport in the last four years. Sales are through the roof. Everybody can go to Academy now and buy a $300 kayak. So it's very popular. So, you know, maybe offering clinics along with launch facilities could be something that the city could look into. Soccer, still obviously very important at 30%. Fishing, another outdoor-based activity. Nature study, 29.9%. I mean, these numbers are correlating with this getting kids back in nature trend that's going on right now. I was just, I was shocked to see some of these numbers, but it's great. And then we asked the adults. So the first one was youth. Now we asked adults, "What kind of activities would you like?" Canoeing and kayaking, 48.9%. It's amazing. Nature study, gardening, 40.6. Health and wellness, 36.5. You know, this is, like I just said, indicative of the trend of getting people back outside, in touch with nature, de-stressing, we have busy lives. So this is something that the Parks and Rec Department should look at in terms of their program and what they're offering. So then we included this slide just because of the importance of the online response here. The orange means that people would like to sign up for Parks and Rec programs or leagues online and using an online system. And it's incredibly orange across the board, you know, 240-something responses for each, no matter if it's a sports league, a camp, a swimming lesson, Lake Nazareth camping fees, nature center birthday parties, they'd love to be able to go online and do it. So that's something that we felt was really strong.
Was your survey all online?
The survey was all online, yes, which, good point, good caveat. Those who are more likely to go online, obviously, did and are more comfortable with online use. So we did ask for, they could choose more than one answer, though, in this question. So they could choose online and a one-stop shop in a physical location.
So does that, excuse me, does that mean that making reservations online is not available now?
No, currently not, no. So the blue is the one-stop shop at a physical location. That's also very popular. Okay, so then we got into some Lake Nazareth specifics, and we wanted to highlight those here. How important are the following facilities? So restrooms, picnic tables, boat ramps, camping areas. You can see restrooms, over 300 people responded. Restrooms are very important. I think that this is one of the highest responded questions. What facilities would you like to see added at Lake Nazareth parks? Again, multi-use trails, same as the previous questions promoting linear parks and hike-and-bike networks. Picnic shelters, pavilions, again, high. Designated and reservable campsites where they're numbered and you have your space and you pay your money for your space. Again, top three. Shower facilities, top four. Campfire rings came in at number five. So, and then RV hookups were at number six. Canoe-kayak, seven. Boat ramps, number eight. So, I mean, these numbers are giving me the perception that people are looking more towards the state park model, where they come in, get their campsite, they have their campfire ring, they have their reserved spot. This is what these numbers are showing. What would you be willing to pay for an annual entrance pass to Lake Nazareth and Twin Buttes Reservoir Parks? So this would be an annual pass. Thirty-two point three percent said $20. Of course, that's the lowest amount, so you're probably going to get a good majority of people picks the lowest amount. But what's interesting to note here is that every other amount, 25, 30, 35, or more than 35, add all those together and it's more than the majority of responses. So the majority of people who responded to this question are willing to pay more than 20. What would you be willing to pay per night for a campsite that's designated and reservable? And this doesn't even have hookups, just, "I get my spot." Again, 43% majority said $8, but again, if you add up nine, 10, 11, and 12, more people said they would pay more than $8 to have that designated spot. So this is interesting for staff when they go to make these management decisions about what they're going to charge for fees, they can look back at these numbers. What would you be willing to pay for the site now with RV hookups? Seventy-eight point three percent said $30. Then there was 40 and 50 as a choice there as well. So those are just highlights of the data. There's more in there in your hard copy. You can look through them. Every question itself can be used and utilized by staff later on in any decision-making process. We got a lot of great data out of that survey. So then we analyzed that data and looked at some more things in particular, and here's some highlights. We did a park acreage needs analysis. We did a percent change in growth analysis, meaning as the population grows, how fast did our park land grow with it? And then we looked at lake park fees analysis and did quite a bit of analysis on what other agencies are doing. Here's an example of what's in your hard copy plan. This is the park acreage needs analysis, excuse me, compares us to Midland, Abbling, Wichita Falls, and Odessa. We have the highest number of parks at 43, however, our parks are smaller in acreage, so we have less total acreage, which means we have less parkland per capita. And as you can see, we're at the bottom across the board. We then, here's the lake park fees analysis I was talking about. This is just one example of the three or four charts that are in there, where we looked at the different agencies, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Corps of Engineers, Colorado River Municipal Water District, and private commercial campgrounds, including KOA and Spring Creek Marina and RV Park, looked at what they charge per their sites, per category, primitive, tent and water, water and electric, water and electric 50 amp. And it shows that we're in line for what we have right now in terms of facilities and amenities, but if we were to add anything, we would need to consider raising our rates to be comparable to what's out there. So then, all that data culminated in these planning guidelines I talked about. And there's 10 planning guidelines that the staff can utilize in this plan for the future. The first one is going to be renovation or adaptive reuse. This simply means that we should look at renovating and repurposing our existing areas as a priority. This is supported by feedback from the public meetings. Where we can adaptively reuse spaces. I have a picture here of the slabs at Ben Ficklin Park because there were some ideas that maybe because of all that concrete feature there, it could be easily converted into a mini skate park. We had a few features there. You've already got concrete, so it's a renovation or adaptive reuse of an area already there. Also, it means engaging local community groups for these small renovation projects, you know, volunteer days to get out there and have some volunteer labor involved. You know, things can get done over time in between waiting for the big grant funds that fund these million-dollar projects. The second guideline would be environmentally responsible activities. With our current water situation, anything we can do for zeroscaping, drip irrigation systems, rainwater harvesting, all these things can be incorporated in park and recreation projects that also become a learning and interpretive tool to the public. It also makes your grant applications really competitive when you're doing things like this in conjunction with providing just recreational opportunities. So I have a picture here of somewhere, obviously not San Angelo with pine trees, but concept is there. You could, any pavilion in San Angelo could have a rainwater barrel right next to it collecting that runoff. Solar-powered lighting, community gardens, recycling, the list goes on. Linkage, big theme of the master plan, like we talked about the linear creeks, the trails. Linking the existing parkland through the network of rivers and creeks that this city has is, it's the biggest theme of this master plan. It was part of the 1967 original Parks Master Plan that San Angelo ever had. And if you look at the conceptual map in that plan, Carl has it with him, because I just returned it to him.
Excuse me.
The map looks very similar to some of the maps we came up with today. It's, the city already owns land along the South Concho River and places like that, and that's what this diagram shows, the conceptual linkage all the way from Goodfellow Air Force Base Housing along the Concho River to Rio Concho, to South Concho, to Lone Wolf Bridge, to Glenmore Park, and now with the fire tower being able to be moved because of the grant they just received, that gives opportunity for linkage now in that property to Glenmore, on to Ben Ficklin, and then on to Lake Nazareth, conceptually. So this is a major tenet of this plan. Cultural resources is another planning guideline. There's so much history here in the Concho Valley from, you know, the Concho Pearls, the Native American inhabitants, the agricultural history. Anytime you can add cultural resource, history, and interpretation into your Parks and Recreation projects, it's going to be a benefit in terms of grant applications and the competitiveness out there. So that's a planning guideline as well. And these are Buffalo Soldiers at the Fort. Land acquisition is a planning guideline. People felt like, public feels like we need land acquisition. It's going to be a planning guideline. Dedicate existing city-owned land to parkland. Like I talked about, the existing land that's already there along the South Concho River, even if it's just, you know, a linear portion, it doesn't have to be the entire amount of the land, but if we can make connections amongst existing parks, the staff should. And we should acquire land for parks in service hole areas, and we'll talk about that in a conceptual map. There are areas of the city that are not served well and focus on linear land acquisition. I said that. So, next planning guideline, geographic distribution, innovative use. Distribute geographically where these parks are going. There are service holes, like I said, they do exist, the far south side, the far north side, and the southwest side of the city. And innovative use of existing property and partnership agreements between entities. Innovative use also makes you very competitive in grant applications. If you can show that you've created some kind of public-private partnership or even nonprofit-to-city partnership, it always benefits you in terms of competitiveness for these funds. And that's a picture of, obviously, the San Angelo Community Tennis Center, which is a great example of innovative partnerships. Again, partnerships is a major theme. Maintain the current ones from the lowest-level partnerships with the stakeholders, the Concha Valley Disc Golf people, the Little Leagues, the SISD, the Road Lizards, all the way to new partnerships that we don't have yet, garden clubs. There's been a big push for some community gardens recently to be adding those into parks. So garden clubs out there, Tom Green County Horticultural Extension, master naturalists out there, they have to do volunteer hours to keep their certifications. They could be doing programs in parks. Concho Bass Club, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Humane Society could help partner with a dog park. There's all these options out there that should be explored. So that's a planning guideline for staff as well. And then recreation diversity, like I mentioned earlier. Implement outdoors-based programming and facilities. Kayaks, launches, disc golf, BMX tracks, anything to create more diversity. And this also scores very high on any kind of grant application with Texas Parks and Wildlife because they want to see that you're expanding recreational opportunities. More diversity, the better. Also, staff should consider developing a multi-generational, multi-use rec facility in the future to serve all ages. If you have a multi-generational facility versus just a senior center or just a youth rec center, you have options for maximizing your use, maximize your revenues. A multi-use facility, I think, is a much better way to approach building a new indoor facility versus separating the uses. And then we talk about focusing on the top 10 priority facility needs in parks. And this is important, it's an important caveat for Texas Parks and Wildlife grants. So we include it here. You have to have a top 10 priority list. And as you go through this list, you remove things and others move up. But this is the list. Hike-bike trails, dog park, picnic shelters, playgrounds and play equipment, canoe-kayak launches, recreation center, multi-use complex, outdoor aquatic park, barbecue grills, outdoor fitness equipment, and lighted outdoor basketball parks. So that's, or courts, excuse me. So that's our top 10 list for that grant purpose. Next planning guideline, water-based recreation opportunities. I know it's a challenge in our current drought situation, but anytime we can enhance these water-based opportunities, the staff should focus on that. Maintain public access to the lake parks. Continue enhancements to the Concho River downtown. Continue the kayaking and fishing access points. Develop additional access along the South Concho River between Lake Nazareth and Bell Street Lake for canoeing, kayaking, fishing, and scenic waterfront trails. And the last planning guideline, enhancing Lake Nazareth parks. It's its own deal, it's so big in scope, it's its own planning guideline. So we talk about focusing on the Big Five. That's what I started calling them, the Big Five. Knickerbocker Park, Mary Lee Park, Middle Concho Park, Spring Creek Park, and South Concho Park. The biggest, most impactful parks with the most amenities have the most usage. These are the parks that staff should focus on. Also enhancing Piccon Creek Pavilion, adding or renovating facilities and charging rental rates that support the operation, so that is actually in the black. Consider public-to-private land swaps for the remaining Nazareth parks, or pocket parks, or circles, whatever we want to call them. There's several properties out there that are not highly utilized. Hot Slough, Red Bluff Circle, Rock Slough, and Shady Point Circle. Continuing on the theme of enhancing Lake Nazareth, develop the designated numbered campsites. Initiate an online reservation system. Consider outsourcing campground management or park maintenance. Implementing a camp host program to assist in managing Middle Concho and Spring Creek. A camp host program is where a, normally it's a couple, a volunteer couple comes in in exchange for a free site with hookups. They provide services to the park to help manage in terms of collecting fees, picking up trash, cleaning restrooms, all those things. So it's done in a lot of other models. It's done in state parks, it's done in Corps of Engineers parks. So consider implementing that as part of this guideline. And then developing new restroom and shower facilities. It's all over the plan, it's over and over been reiterated because the data is so importantly favored towards this. Renovate boat ramps and docks, add designated paved parking for trucks and trailers, add more picnic pavilions, and develop new playground areas at the Big Five, and develop public-private partnership opportunities at the north end of Mary Lee Park, which is what the picture is of the current, one of the current buildings there. So conceptual maps. A few maps here we've pulled just to help you visualize some of the concepts. You have much, many more in your actual hard copy plan. Here's a real quick conceptual map showing the linkage between the Goodfellow Housing Base along the river to the Texas Bank Sports Complex. The red is the proposed trail linkage, obviously. An easement could be negotiated with a quicksand golf course to make this happen. Oldworth Private Property Owners on the other side, but it's entirely possible. And Goodfellow Housing is, you know, such an important integral part of the community. So if we can connect it and then on back from Rio Concho to the downtown area, it can be an incredible trail system. Here is conceptual link of the Red Arroyo Trail, which is already actually in design phase, so that's happening. But conceptually, it's showing how it could potentially go across the loop and service the Bluffs neighborhood in that side of, the west side of town, which is currently underserved. There is some ASU softball fields and a whole athletic complex out there with some open space, and there is some open land there in the Bluffs where a partnership could occur for a park there or a trail system to be linked back to the Red Arroyo. Here is a map to show the pinkish-purple is all the city land owned along the South Concho and how a link could easily be created along the South Concho from, all the way up from Bell Street Lake all the way down to Ben Ficklin and all the way down to Lake Nazareth. Here is the map that shows the, it's kind of squished on your view, of the service holes. And the red is the service holes. The far north side does not have any parks that serve it currently. The far west side, there's a small one there around the Red Arroyo because it's not constructed yet. And then the far south side there. The yellow are the nodes that connect all the trail linkages together. They're the most impactful parks that are currently there that have the most amenities. And there are a few of them are potential parks, like on the far north side, that's a potential park. You can see, we've already done a really good job in the center of town. You can see all that green already there along the main channel of the Concho. That's what has already been acquired as parkland, but the green on the far northeast side is the East Angelo Draw. Potentially, that could be, the trail system could be designed along that. And then the connections on the South Concho all the way down to Lake Nazareth and the Red Arroyo across to the west side of town. Here is a quick little map of Middle Concho Park and what could be done conceptually to create designated and reserved campsites, control the traffic flow there, and create an actual road system. You can see on the Google Map, and that's why You can see on the Google Map, and that's why I use that background, there's quite a bit of white roads that are just interconnecting and weaving throughout, trees, and they're everywhere. We need to control that traffic and establish a road system. You can then have designated numbered sites, renovated restrooms, create, the green is the trail connections back on the other side of the park road. You could have canoeing kayak launch areas with designated parking. Just a real conceptual idea of what could happen there at Middle Concho. And here is a map of Spring Creek with a conceptualized new entrance directly across from the airport. We proposed Lake Nazaworthy and Twin Buttes Recreation Area Visitor Center, much like the one downtown that functions to provide information to visitors. There could be something built there that serves both lakes and also information about town, and it would be directly across the airport when people arrived. And then there's proposal to expand and relocate and expand the San Angelo Nature Center and really capitalize on what they have there and, and convert it into a native Texas Zoo that would draw tourists or visitors there and local citizens, much like Abilene's Zoo does. And it's all in one location and one area. And then it connects back to Spring Creek Park, which is a major park for San Angelo on the lake, with facilities already there. And then there would be additional camping added there, as you can see, that's the two or three camping loops there with restroom and shower facilities. And these could be operated by the city, or they could also be leased out like, like Spring Creek Marina is currently. But this is just a conceptualized option. And there's different, other different plans just like this in the hard copy that you have of the master plan. So then, the final piece is the funding and partnership resources, and that's what I talked about earlier, where there's discussions on the grants from the different funds, from federal and state, and private foundations. There's grants out there from a thousand dollars, from Home Depot, or Project Green Thumb, which is operated by Fiskars Landscape Tools, where you can get a thousand dollars to start building a community garden, all the way up to, you know, the million that you can get from the recreation grants, branch at Texas Parks and Wildlife. Then we discuss traditional funding methods, how the city might have a voter-approved bond initiative. And then we talk about other options, user-fee-supported facilities, and what facilities might be able to produce some revenue, partnerships that are out there that the city should try and focus on, and state and national programs for recreation events to help city recreation staff tie into national events that are already there, utilize their marketing tools, utilize their, their programming elements that are already established, and just sign on and be part of a national event. So, those are the options there. And then is the conclusion. So I guess we'll take a few questions now before we go on, Carl?
Right.
We'll take a few questions. I know it was a lot, and there's a lot more in there, so.
Question, Mr. Silver.
I have a dumb, I have a dumb question. Where is Knickerbocker Park?
Knickerbocker Park is the boat ramp that is on Lake Nazaworthy as you cross, right before you cross, no, right after you cross the bridge.
Mary Harden.
Mary Lee.
Not Mary Lee, Mary, no. Help.
Is it the Abbott, it's Abbott's boat ramp, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's Beatty Road and Knickerbocker. First time you see Knickerbocker water, look left.
No.
Not Beatty Road, not Beatty Road.
Oh, it's the one, it's at the pack saddle, first one left at the pack saddle. Yeah, that's it. Sorry.
It's before you cross the bridge, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. It's before you cross the bridge. I wish I had a map of.
It's, it's Red Bluff and Knickerbocker move south a hundred yards.
Thanks, got it.
Across where the WTU plant was, across from there.
And then what are?
Yes, across from the water plant.
Right.
And there is some old park equipment there. I mean, a swing set kind of thing.
There is, there's a swing set and a couple picnic tables, and there's a, it's the, actually the only boat ramp on Lake Nazaworthy that has designated boat and trailer parking.
Yeah, no, no, exactly.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned something else that I, did you say camp rings or something? What, camp ring?
Fire rings, sorry, campground rings.
Rings.
Sorry, I talk fast sometimes.
What are those?
It's a metal ring, so that you can do tarkhole, and it doesn't have a way to spread or?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's an actual metal ring that would be in the ground, and that's where your designated fire would go. Currently, if you go out there, you see people are making their own fire rings and just having fires, even though they're not supposed to, but it's a designated spot, so it's allowed.
Thank you.
Other questions on this first part of the presentation? Okay, I think we're ready. Thank you.
Well, we're asking council to, to adopt the plan. This plan is conceptual, it's not gonna, it's not saying that we're gonna go out and.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What else, Carl?
I was gonna wait for you to stop talking, Carl.
Carl, I would like to tell you, I enjoyed your article on parks and things to do in San Angelo and the areas, very good.
Did I hear zoo?
Yeah, there's a.
A zoo was mentioned.
Motion, right?
Second.
Choose anybody. Okay.
A zoo and.
I think she's the only one that didn't make a second, but she's the one that she chose.
I like that.
Texas Native Zoo, so it wouldn't be exotic animals from other places, what they're suggesting.
Necessarily.
Necessarily.
Excuse me. I have a motion and a second to approve the, the first presentation as a master plan, not to be implemented completely or funded, to come back for different votes and those kinds of things, but to be used as a guide. And so, do I have public input on that motion? Okay? Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sir.
The second part of this, this item, if we're ready to move forward, is asking for authorization to adopt a resolution to apply for Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Boat, Boat, Boating Access Grant. And, like I say, it's, it's not reliant on us passing the, adopting the master plan, but it is, it is directly related. The reason why we bring it to you today is because the grant application is due October 31st. And as you've seen, the public has, does have an interest in doing some improvements at the lake, including what's in this grant application, you'll see here in a second. Well, staff recommends adopting this resolution to apply for the grant. And we seek some direction as to which area to, to look, to work at first, because we have lots of different opportunities, lots of different boat ramps that need improvement. We've narrowed it down to two. We'll show you those two and ask for your direction. And I think we have some public comment as well. But looking at the state grants right now, a lot of the grants have been cut back severely or suspended. We've been very successful with the outdoor recreation grants, they used to be as, as high as a half a million dollars. We got one for the River Project, we got one for Kirby Park. We've been very successful, the recreation trails grants, we have one for the River Project right now, and we need to be substantially complete with that one later this summer before we apply again. But we have, we don't, we haven't applied for this boating access grant in a long time, and it's, it's a good time to apply for it. One location is South Concho Park. It's on South Concho Drive. It's, the recreation, Air Force Recreation Camp is further up this way, Pecan Creek Pavilion is back this way. There is a residential area on this end, and a residential area on this end. There's a boat ramp at this location, this, this end, and another ramp at this end. Restrooms are down at this end. It's a very popular park. Just a close look at the area that we'd like to improve. The boat ramp here is in need of improvements. It would be good, and we would have to, as part of this grant, expand the lanes to four, from two to four, develop parking areas, and some other improvements. Just a quick look at the budget, this is a draft budget, but we think it could cost as much as about $440,000. The good thing about these grants are they are 75% matching funds to our 25%. There's, the upfront items in terms of inspections and permits and plans development, about $44,000, and the actual construction, a little under $400,000. But that would include site preparation, roads and parking, docking area, boat ramps, the restrooms, dredging in front of the boat ramp, area lighting, accessibility connections, and signage. The other location is Middle Concho Park. This is a large park, very popular park. It's, it's, it's way off the main road, though, as, as is South Concho Park. But here's the entrance to the park, where the, you pay the fee to get in. It's right at the end of that road. We'd like to improve the restrooms, add some shower facilities, improve the parking. We probably wouldn't have that connection there, it'd probably be a turnaround. Parking for boats and trailers, improve this ramp and, and expand the width of this ramp, and as well as some other improvements. Here's the budget, it's a little bit more, about $470,000, with $46,000 in upfront costs and $425 in development costs. We did a quick pros and cons of looking at South Concho Park and Middle Concho Park. Pros with South Concho Park is, it is a popular boat ramp, it's used quite frequently. It's, it's a wonderful spot on the lake. The improvements are really needed to, to the ramp. Cons are, it's a small, narrow park, and there's really no room for any kind of growth or expansion. The park isn't easily accessible from the main road, it's, it's off a bit away of the main road. And it's not a seasonal fee park, it's not a location where we take fees for entrances. So there's, there's less chance for revenue. And the park has neighborhoods on both sides. Middle Concho Park is also a very popular park, one of the most visited parks. It, it is, is large, so it could be expanded, other improvements could be added. The improvements are needed, although not as, quite as much as needed at South Concho Park. It's removed them from the neighborhood, so the increased activity would have less disruption on the neighborhoods. This park is also used for large events, like the wakeboard tournament, also supplementary for the, the showdown event during the summer. It is a seasonal fee park, therefore increased use could increase revenue. The cons, the boat ramp is in decent shape, but only has two lanes. You know, if we wanted to target just the boat ramp that needed work, there are other boat ramps that could use the, the work compared to this one. The park's not easily accessible to the main road, and it's currently on a septic tank system, and it would have to remain as such.
Where's the Middle Concho Park?
At the end of Red Bluff Road.
Turn, turn by.
Oh, Grassy Meadows, right?
Right, Grassy Meadows is way down on this end.
Okay, all right, got it, got it.
Kane's Cove is up here.
Does the Lake Nazaworthy Homeowners Association have a recommendation?
They have some other ideas, and they, they're here, they can speak. They've submitted some other ideas for other improvements, and I think a lot, some of these are pretty small, and I think we can tackle those with, since they're a lot smaller, just smaller improvement projects that aren't quite as broad, that include restrooms and parking areas.
Before we go there, whatever, since you're talking about boat ramps and improvements, what happened to the boat ramp over there by Spring Creek? Was that ever finished?
It's not finished.
Still not finished?
No, there has been a contractual discussion going on between the owner there of the Spring Creek Marina and the city, and how to utilize that area for events that go on there. And so there were some discrepancies in the lease there, so we're straightening all that up. It's illegal right now, that contract, so once that is signed, then the goal would be to get that constructed before the next post-race.
Yes, I'm a.
I'm Tad Logan, the current.
Mr. Logan, let me just be sure if I didn't give anyone a chance to ask Carl any questions. Let me do that first, and then, do you guys have anything specifically for Carl's presentation?
I don't have a clue as to which one to recommend first. I'd like to hear from the property owners.
Yeah, I'm gonna definitely pull everybody up. I just, I wasn't so much looking for movement on what he said, I was talking about questions on what he said.
Based on your presentation, Carl, are you leaning more towards Middle Concho Park?
Yes.
As opposed to, okay.
Okay, so, past this presentation, now I'm very happy to listen to others. Mr. Logan?
Good afternoon, I'm Tad Logan, the current president of Lake Nazaworthy Homeowners Association. We're excited that, that Carl's found this grant, or Paul, or Carl, or the council. We feel like this is a beginning step to make improvements at the lake, and it needs to continue on an annual basis. These ramps, not, not only do we have two, we've probably got 20 that need repairs, retaining walls, paving, got lots of work that can be done around the lake, and we've got a lot more traffic, day in and day out, than we used to. Also today, I wanna, I wanna discuss a couple of concerns of the property owners at the lake. Basically, we've had some discussion from a lot of people about the, our new gateway group that's coming in. And this is, I think this is great that we're looking.
Make sure, just gotta make sure, just, I mean, this is just the way the system has to work, keep us all in bounds. Make sure that you keep your remarks confined basically to.
To ramps and improvements, okay. Well, that's, that's what I want to do. Basically, the, the homeowners at Lake Nazaworthy are concerned about the water quality and the property, property quality around the lake. They're afraid this gateway, or whoever comes in, is gonna be more for commercialization around the lake, and not worried about the water, water quality and the property quality. This ramp, the ramp grant is, is a great place to start. But we want to see continued maintenance around the lake. We, you know, and I'm not sure how this is done. I don't think we need to do a dredging project necessarily, or whatever. I think we could do this by means of putting a track hole on a barge, going around, cleaning up islands and debris, taking banks out. I think we could do a lot of things that would not cause a lot of problems with the Bureau of Reclamation. Anyway, a continuing maintenance project is what we're looking at. And the association wants to be kept more in the loop. We feel like we've kind of been dropped several times in the last few months. One's when the lake was dropped 21 inches in seven to 10 days. We've got millions of dollars' worth of recreation equipment sitting on that lake, and we need at least seven days' notice, anytime a radical change is gonna take place on that lake.
That's a very fair thing, and, and there's been a lot of discussion about, really, there just was no communication.
Right, and, and we just wanna be.
As you called your council member, he didn't know anything about it.
I don't think anybody knew we were doing it.
And I didn't know anything.
I'm not sure Will knew we were doing it.
All of us went through, all of us went through what you're describing. I hope that we all kind of learned from that, that we've gotta do a better job of it.
I knew, I just wasn't talking.
Okay.
Well, we just want to be sure we're kept in the loop of, of any major changes in the level of that lake out there. This was, you know, caused a pretty good hardship on people.
Surely.
We do want to thank y'all for, for this grant. We think this is a great place to start. We do want to be kept in the loop, and we've got aerial photographs of probably 30 ramp locations out there. Carl, of course, has picked these, we're under such a tight timeline, we understand that. But I think there's a lot of other work that can be done. But anyway, we're just, we're just wanting to be in communications from now on, and be sure that we're consulted about what is being done around the lake. Thank you.
You bet.
I have some more to talk about, the boat ramps. I'm Lee Bell on the Lake Nazaworthy Homeowners Association Architectural Control Committee. And we've been working with Carl, and I agree with everything he said. And I would have liked to mention, on this grant application from Texas Parks and Wildlife, they use this lake probably more than any other lake for training game wardens and practicing out there, to the point that some people have even complained of harassment. However, and talked to them, they said, "We're gonna keep using this lake, we're gonna keep on training, we're gonna keep on doing it, so get used to it." So, anyway, their name's right in the middle of this grant, and I, I think we could probably get support from the Parks and Wildlife Department in helping us get this grant probably approved. Also, another thing I'd like to say about the ramps, when Twin Buttes was built in 1963 or four, when it was finished, that's when a lot of these ramps were put in there, and they've had a very limited amount of maintenance. And also, where he's talking about extending them out and which they need to be, because boats in the 1960s didn't reach from me to you, and then the trailer about half that long. Now we have got 30-foot trailers, we've got very old boats, some of them, I believe, are too big for this lake. But nevertheless, to get them in and out, especially when the lake went down, people on these ramps tearing their boats up, their trailers up, everything up, because the shoddy conditions the ramps are in. Another thing that we can do, I think, with a limited amount of money, and the, the lake administration, and I mean, the lake operations also, they have been great. Every time I've ever asked them to do anything, I mean, they're Johnny on the spot and do it within hours. And they're just great. They have fixed some ramps around there, and I think done an outstanding job on minimum repairs, and maybe some temporary repairs. And I think that's something else that we ought to look into. But, other than that, I don't have much more to add. We are working with, with, with Carl, and I, like I said again, we appreciate all y'all's consideration, you know.
Okay, sir, and between either both of you or another person from your association, I don't know what every. I don't know what everybody else heard, but I mean, what I heard was there are several, I mean, up to 30 ramps that need some attention and those things. But I didn't hear you weigh in specifically on South Concho or Middle Concho for the big project.
The problems with South Concho, and we're working on those, and I mean, we've been in them. And the South Concho Park, that's the one that the game wardens use the most out there. I saw them out there the other day. The Parks and Wildlife Recreation People were out there shocking the fish, making a fish count out there. They use that ramp probably more than anything else. The problem with it is it's small, it's old, and it has a lot of parking at that area. And it, oh, yeah, you got the wrong one. Put it over there. It's got a lot of parking and parking that would be real easy to be accessed. I think there's a pipe fence or something over there, but all of that can be accessed for parking. It's a real popular ramp because it's got a lot of parking on it. And all it needs to be is widened, but it does, it drops off. It's in deep water. And that's good because it's in deep water and kind of goes down. But as low as the lake is, it definitely needs to be widened and extended. But I mean, it's, with a minimum amount of work, that can be a great, that can be a great part. And the other one that we were looking at there, the way he's got that fixed is good. I don't think, one thing I might disagree with him a little bit on it being on the the cons of being off the main road, I think that may be a plus that it's off the main road. And it's not, and to get in and out with the traffic being off the main road, I think it makes it a little bit easier accessible and they're not in heavy traffic like they are on Nickenbacher Road or something like that.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any question?
Other public comment? Okay. Ms. Farmer, did you-
Yes.
Okay.
Wanted to weigh in a comment here on this. Carl and I have talked about this a lot, trying to make a decision to present to you. And I just want to make sure everyone here understands, while this is a boating access grant, it gives a lot of leeway for what you can include in the grant. So it's including parking, lighting, restroom facilities. Like we said, it's not just specifically for a boat ramp. And while there are very many boat ramps that need improvements, we were trying to present options where a restroom is also needed very badly. That's why Middle Concho is our first choice and our recommendation because of the fact that restrooms, looking back at the data and the plan, were the number one issue of concern for residents. And boat ramps were on the list as well. But so anywhere there's a combination of boat ramp and restroom needing attention would be a prime spot to look at. So that's why the recommendation has been Middle Concho. South Concho is also an option, so just want to let you know.
I'd like to make a motion to approve in that we give staff direction with, as it relates to the Middle Concho Park and other areas surrounding the lake.
Okay, so you're making a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Texas Parks and Wildlife State Boating Access Program 75% Matching Fund reimbursement grant and that that be applied toward the Middle Concho Park improvements as presented.
So motive.
I thought you said that very well. So we have Mr. Adams' motion, Mr. Hirschfeld's second. Do we have any further comment on this?
Question.
I did have one further comment on the South Concho Park. City access to city sewer and water is available right there. I mean, it runs right beside it. So that makes, you know, if we're gonna put in restrooms or something like that, I mean-
You guys, thank you. I appreciate you. Listen, we've got, we've got some movement here toward the middle park, but it seems to me like what we just heard was that we need to be making it really clear to the council on a capital improvement basis that there's, that we could do something fairly quickly and not that expensively on the south park, okay? There's an ability to do something maybe with, again, with small restrooms and with the improvement of that of that ramp facility without spending oodles and gobs of money. And so you make a big run at one of these and a small run at the other one on an intermittent basis and then get to a bigger improvement down the road, so.
Well, Mayor, the water fund, as council is aware, has dedicated money for capital projects. It's just that the focus of the water administration at this point has been on supply and some direction from council about tackling some of these smaller projects or at least funding them through the sweat of Carl, maybe. You know, I'm not sure who would manage the projects, but you're right there.
So I don't want to overrun our headlights here. All I'm saying is, you know, it seems like to me that we ought to be looking at the South Concho Park as something that we work toward funding, okay? And we work toward doing the improvement on and that we, those kinds of things. And where we try to use the grant monies to do something more significant on the Middle Concho as was just described by our councilman. So all I'm trying to do is say, instead of making this an either or, how about let's make this a Middle Concho and then go to work trying to figure out at least some stair-step measures toward the South Concho. Do something about their boat ramp. Do something about the fact that since you already have sewer and water there, it's gonna be cheaper to do some basic things there. And that's where my head is on this, okay?
I was hoping to hear Carl talk about just how much road leading to the boat ramp could be repaved or rebuilt with the grant money. Couple of miles, I think, would be justified.
Okay, yes, Mr. Silvers?
No, I was just, I didn't want to outrun our cart like your headlights. Now, there's an October 31st deadline for this grant?
Yes, sir.
$500,000 grant?
Yes, sir, up to $500,000.
Two, five, okay. We're authorizing our city manager to apply for it.
That's correct.
We're sitting here talking like it's a done deal, so I mean-
No, it's not just telling them which one to, which one to put in the grant.
If we are approved or given the grant, then we can go.
Right. Even if we are awarded the grant, I have to bring it back to council to accept the grant.
Okay. But I'm just kind of hearing talk like, you know, the money's already there, so.
Gotcha.
I totally understand where you're going. It just seemed like we were a little premature.
Overrun, okay.
Gotta apply for it first.
Hope we get it, right. Okay. But the motion is to approve them to, you know, to adopt a resolution to allow them to apply for it and asking them to use this project as the one that they try to get funded, okay? So is there further comment or question before I call for that vote? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Carl, and thank you. Number 15.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've requested 15 and 16. These are quite lengthy discussions and I'm sure going to be argumentative. It's 10 after 3 now and we've still got nine more items on the agenda to go. So if time allows for the second reading of these, I would like to request a postponement of these two items till next meeting. If that's all right with the rest of the council.
I'd like to have an opportunity to take closer look at them anyway, so.
Okay, so we're asking for 15 and 16 to be tabled until the next meeting, okay? Is there-
I was gonna ask if 21 could be tabled as well.
All right, let me ask about 17 first and then we'll get to 21. I'm okay, I just don't want to mess up and forget something. So 17 would be where we would go next.
We need 17.
All right, we're gonna need to take on 17. Mr. Adams, now let's look at 21. You'd like to possibly see it tabled? Okay, is there concern with the group if we table 21? Mr. Lewis? Okay, so 21 can be tabled. 15, 16, 21 tabled, yes?
I think on 21, there's public notice requirements on this one. I need to verify with AJ. On number 21?
Okay, so that we may have trouble tabling it, is what you're saying?
Why don't we just take 21? Get it done.
We can table item 21. It's not a time-sensitive item. We'll just have to do another re-notification, but we can do that.
Is it gonna take us long to go through it?
I don't anticipate it taking us a long time. Is that a safe response? I can make it very quick if you would like.
Okay, let's just take a look, hang on. 23?
Yeah, we probably need to do that.
23 for sure, right?
Yes.
24?
Shouldn't take long, should it?
All I'm doing is looking for guidance because I want to move us, move us and-
And I can move my item to the next meeting item, number 29.
So 29 postponement?
Yeah.
Okay, 26 and 28. 26 ought to be fairly easy.
We need 28. 28 should be pretty easy.
28. Okay, what I'm gonna propose is that we do 17. I've got an iffy on 21. I've got 17, 23, 24, 26, 28 for sure. Tabling 15, 16, 21, 27, and 29. Okay, tabling 15, 16, 21, 27, and 29. And handling 17, 21, 23, 24, 26, and 28.
I think we hit 21.
I said it was iffy and I could go either way, but-
I think we hit it. I don't think it'll take us that long.
I got it on there, okay. So it's 15, 16, 27, and 29 that got tabled. 15, 16, 27, and 29 that got tabled.
27, we just finished.
Oh, it's because I didn't mark it off. Okay, all right. We don't have to table it since we already did it. All right, so 15, 16, and 29, is that the ones we're tabling then? And so we'll handle 17, 21, 23, 24, and 26. Y'all don't tell me I did 17, too. We're about to. All right, 17.
We lost him.
Sorry. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, sir.
How are you, sir?
I'm fine and happy all week.
This is a first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the remittance of landfill rates. Presentation by our operations director, Ricky Dixon.
Correct. If you remember last month, we went through the long process of amending the landfill rates and this amendment to the fee schedule is just, gives the direction to the landfill operator on that portion of the fees that we increased to remit back to the city of San Angelo. And that's as simple as it can get. It's just merely an amendment to the ordinance so that the amount that we raised comes back to us for the funding needed.
Versus not coming back to us.
If without this, it's not.
That's motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Hirschfeld and an actual second from Mr. Adams this time. So do I have questions on this one? Do I have public input on this one? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 18. Ms. Faver, you have the model.
18's done.
Ah, number eight, let's, don't do 18, let's do 21.
We're not doing, we did 18, didn't?
We did it earlier.
We did it earlier. I'm sorry for the, for the mess.
I had it checked, so.
Look here.
18, 19, 20 are done, okay? So I'm doing 17, 21. Done 22, I'll do 23, 24, we've done 25, okay?
Just trying to help the people get out of here, so. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Ready? 21, right? Okay. What we're doing here is, this is a pretty simple request. We're doing a planned development district for the soccer complex located on Glena Street. You've seen us bring you some of these responses in the past, again, in an attempt to bring all of our city portfolio of properties up to our zoning requirements and subdivision requirements that the remainder of the city do have to follow. In this particular request, we had 25 notifications that went out. We received two in opposition. I will mention that at the beginning of this request, we received a number of phone calls and contacts coming into the office. There was some concern about a possible expansion of these soccer fields. And so the overwhelming concepts that we heard from people that caused them concern was an additional increase in traffic and an additional increase in development on the site. We did put together a map that is shown as Exhibit B in the ordinance that we've put together and which is in your background report. And that Exhibit B actually denotes a large area at the southern edge of this property. And if I can, here we go, which is roughly half of the site to remain undeveloped as it is today. Once we expressed that particular concept to the people that were calling and coming by with concerns, we quickly stopped hearing from people. So I believe that we've probably adequately addressed those concerns. The zoning of this site is residential and has been residential since 1954 when it was first brought into the city into a zoning classification. This particular planned development ordinance would actually more strictly limit the city in what we can do with this property. So that should provide some assurance to the nearby neighborhood in terms of guaranteeing exactly what activities that they can see and expect to see on the site and what kinds of traffic and other kinds of development they would also see. Another exhibit which is in the planned development district ordinance is a slide that I've pulled up here. The black areas denote where there are small buildings that are already in place along the site. And the letters A, B, and C would show the possible location for three different signs, which I'll let Mr. Anthony Wilson talk about in just a moment. So that is another feature of the planned development district ordinance. The floor area ratio for this site is severely limited to a very, very small amount, smaller than any zoning district in the city would actually allow. So we are preserving the site as open space, which is consistent with our vision plan for the city. And that also seemed to alleviate a lot of the concerns that we were hearing. We did take this to the planning commission and they did recommend approval of this. Their vote was six to one. We had no one attend that meeting to speak either for or against the item. And so that's a little bit of background and I'll let Mr. Wilson jump in if you have questions and if he has some things to add.
Okay.
Motion to approve zoning request changed.
Second.
Okay, I believe Mr. Hirschfeld, I have a motion from Ms. Farmer, a second from Mr. Hirschfeld. Is there, are there questions on her part before I bring in Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
I'm just here to entertain questions.
A, B, and C, what?
Well, this, initially this request was sort of sparked by Citywide's marketing's interest in potentially selling naming rights to this complex. And we worked with the Bureau of Reclamation in order to gain that permission to do that. And so as part of the sponsorship package, we wanted to have three different places where the naming rights sponsor could have some signage. And so these are the three spots that we worked with, the soccer association and with Citywide's marketing and the planning department in order to identify these spots.
Okay, and you have a motion in a second. Is there further, yes, Mr. Silvers?
Anthony, I was contacted a number of weeks ago by one of the soccer association's boarder directors and they said they had unanimously voted against the idea, so did you work with them or not? Or I heard different.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you raised that and I'll be happy to explain. Stephen McLaughlin, the president of Citywide's Marketing, and I went to a board meeting of the soccer association to run this idea by them because obviously we want their buy-in and we want this to be a win-win situation for all involved, including the soccer association. When we left that meeting, there were no concerns voiced to us whatsoever and they sort of told us to, you know, go and see if you can make this happen. In the interim, we have heard some concerns about them about whether or not we should be selling advertising and naming rights at this complex. And in fact, just yesterday, I spoke with Jerry Merrill, who is the treasurer for the-
And that's who contacted you?
Okay. And I explained to Jerry that regardless of whether we sell advertising at this spot, the planning division has always planned on rezoning all city parks to planned development districts because most of them are zoned residential and they're not really residential properties. This zoning makes best sense for these types of properties. He understood that and he agreed. At the same time, we're still, I would say, in negotiations with the soccer association to find some sort of middle ground that makes sense for all involved in a way that not only the Citywide and obviously the city can benefit from the selling of naming rights and advertising there, but that the soccer association can as well. And so Jerry's very agreeable to that. We've been trying very diligently to get in touch with the board president and we've left many, many messages for him. And so I feel, I feel very confident that we will reach some sort of agreement with the soccer association. But, you know, those negotiations still have to play out. And regardless of that, we still think that a planned development district zoning is the best zoning for this property.
Who was that board president?
Lyle Egan. Lyle Egan.
What do we charge for the facilities to the soccer association?
It's a nominal fee. It's a kind of an interesting arrangement. The city leases the property from the Bureau of Reclamation and then, excuse me, it's from the Corps of Engineers. Then we turn around and lease the property to the soccer association. then we turn around and lease the property to the soccer association, like, and also the city provides all of the landscaping, all the mowing of the soccer association at a cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of about forty thousand dollars per year, which is...
But for sure, don't let us make any money to help pay for that.
That's a council decision.
Okay, come on. Okay.
We don't charge them the forty thousand.
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, alright, just clear on that.
Yeah.
We... It cost us...
It cost us forty thousand in, in half-cent sales guidance. That's how that subsidized.
Interesting.
Exactly.
Okay, anyway. Alright, sir, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second to approve this as a, you know, as a planned development district, and so are there further questions on this? Right. Is there any other public input or, or statement? Okay. Okay, this is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance, and so the ordinance has been introduced in the form of a motion. I have a second. Let me call for a vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number twenty-two's been handled. Twenty-three, please. Discussion of and possible action to increase the city of San Angelo's ambulance fees. Presentation by our fire chief, Brian Dunn.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We're here today to discuss the possibility of raising ambulance fees, which this mostly stems from, if you'll remember, back in June, I brought an EDA grant for a training center to y'all for approval, and part of that stipulation of that grant was that if we, if we, if they gave us a grant, there was, there was funds that we were gonna have to put forward, too, and this was one of the ways to help pay for those funds. If you saw your Friday packet, we did get that one point two million dollar EDA grant for the training center. So, and this discussion was put off until now to see kind of how that, that went. These are our current rates right now, and what they are is BLS, non-emergency, that stands for basic life support. ALS stands for advanced life support, and there's different categories. These are the, and then it's mileage per hauled mile, or per mile that there's a patient in the back. We also provide standby services, and what those are, most places don't do that, but this is for when we do, like, the football games where UIL has to have an ambulance standing by, the rodeo, where we have ambulances out there for the rodeo, for the ten-day rodeo, drag races, those sort of things, college graduation. These are our benchmark cities, Abilene, as, as the regular benchmark cities. These are the four cities, and I have comparison rates against them. Against our benchmark cities, there's our rates on the bottom, and this is the average of those four cities there. For those, you'll notice there's another run, another category in there called BLS emergency. In the last year, Medicare has added two other categories. One of those is BLS emergency, the other one is ALS non-emergency. We have not updated our categories since January, so we don't have these rates some of these places have. Those are the comparisons for, for that. What you have, and what we did there was call around to multiple places in this area. We called Odessa, Midland, which two of those were on the deal, El Paso Fire, Fort Stockton, Pecos County EMS, Big Spring Fire Department, Ballinger, Reynolds County, Del Rio, Valverde County, Sonora, Sutton County, and Plainview Fire. And these are all, you know, other than El Paso, all about our size or smaller in this area, and they're all city or county-run EMS. This is the average rate for these places here against our rates. You see, most of them, they don't do standby. My proposed rate was to go to the average of the West Texas county and city amount, to the average, which was, I believe it was the prior screen. Yes. That was, that was what my proposal is, to go to the average rate of what those places are, Ballinger, Sonora, Midland, Odessa, Valverde County.
And Brian did that excluding, a lot of them have private, but it's more expensive.
Yeah, I've got a list for private.
So we went with just the county, city.
Private, too, but they're a little higher. If you go to this proposed rate, the revenue generation will be approximately four hundred and eighty thousand net of the fees that we pay the billing company. And there's your proposed versus the average rate side by side, again, so you can see what I proposed. You see the ALS, most of those haven't transferred to that one category that's categorized under Medicare, because there's a non-applicable there. These ones that we surveyed hadn't even created that rate in their billing system yet. I have it set where you can either go to the proposed rate, or you can phase it in. There's the, the phase in, in one year or two-year. At the bottom is a revenue-generated net of fees with that phase in. The cost of the training facility estimate is two point six million, and we got the one point two million grant, so we need to finance one point four million dollars of that. One point four million dollars at ten years, at four percent's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar annual payment. At fifteen years, at four percent's a hundred and twenty-four thousand and change annual payment, and all those are per year, for a one-time payment per year. The hundred and seventy, if you do the four hundred and eighty thousand on the projected revenue, there's what your bond payment would be if you chose to go that route. There's below that, the amount of capital for other expenses, and then I listed things that you could use that capital for. Right now, two ambulances come out of the general vehicle capital fund. We do need to update our data software, or that we put all our run data in, that's a one-time cost. Fire truck capital, there is some pay issues with decompression within the fire department pay structure. Those are some of the things that you could use extra money for. That's a council policy decision.
Questions for this presentation?
I think, truly, I think you need to describe the decompression, or compression problem, and what it entails to decompress.
Part of the compression problem is the way the pay, pay has been going. If the steps aren't cut off, you're, I don't know if anybody was on council, I think we had some fix in two thousand and six, but what's happening is that the, the rate from a rank structure below is, is up, and, and as those guys progress through there, you get where they pass the bottom level of the next rank. And where this is an issue in civil service is that it says that all personnel will start or be paid at the same rank. So, nobody wanted to promote because they were having to drop back in pay. So we still have a little, some issues there that we're trying to work with and work through.
Okay, now this part isn't making that decision, it's just making money available that could be used for that, and that's what you made clear.
That's a council decision.
I have a motion from Mr. Adams to accept this. I have a second. Now, I am trying to clarify that your, your take, your motion is to accept the first proposal, just go to the average?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to go to the average and, and implement this. So now, I have comments and questions on this motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Morrison?
What are your rates of non-pail, non-payment on ambulance runs right now at our current charges?
Our collection rate right now runs about seventy-five percent.
What do you think's gonna happen when we double, almost double the amounts that we charge?
The collection rate will go down. Here's the thing, for people that are on Medicare, anything that is above what Medicare will pay will get wiped out. Of course, that will drive the collection rate down, but there's no other billing to those individuals that are on Medicare. If they have Medicare, and Medicare says, if your bill is six hundred dollars, and Medicare says it will pay five hundred, they pay five hundred, and the other gets cleaned.
What if they don't have Medicare or insurance? They're just not gonna pay it.
Well, and that's true. That's, that's part of the other un-collection on this side now, and I know the company does, will set up payment, payment plans with them if they want to, but you're right, there is individuals that just don't pay it.
Does your additional revenue scenario include any modification to your payment? With a seat?
Yes.
As far as what's gonna collect, yeah, he sent me an Excel spreadsheet with all that input, and I punched numbers in. It, it'll downgrade what will be paid and take that into account.
That data comes directly from our collection agency, and so they calculate that in force.
Yeah, I couldn't develop that. I don't have the data that they have.
But the numbers that you indicate...
This is from his, his spreadsheet. That's right, it takes all that into account.
That's taken into account, a potential lowering of that collection rate.
That's correct.
Got it.
I personally think that we ought to be building our fire station with capital improvement funds instead of on the back of the people that need an ambulance. People that need an ambulance are already in trouble, and now we come up and charge them with a very excessive amount. It's just, it's compounding the problem. In my opinion, we ought to be using capital improvement money to do our fire building, and not, not putting it on the back of our citizens. It's just another, it's just another fee that our citizens are having to, to deal with. I'm, I'm not going to support it.
That is a council decision.
Today, we're deciding whether, for you to, whether to raise the fees.
That's correct.
That is the only thing we're deciding today.
That's correct.
Got it, just making sure.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this as presented, raising to the average. Further questions or comments before I call for the vote?
But let me ask you this, is it, like Mr. Morrison just states, is it to raise the additional revenue to build your facility? Is that what it's going to be used for?
What?
Or later on, salary increase, or what?
Well, that's, that's y'all's decision. Right now, as it sets, if you want to do the bond payment, it's a hundred and seventy, which we're gonna have to pay for the training center, because that's already went through council and was approved then. At that time, you set that money, I believe, in the reserve fund to take care of that, but the idea was to try to get a bond issued later.
Yeah, I find it hard to swallow, you know. I agree with, you need a new training facility, and I'm so happy you got that one point two million dollar grant and all, but man...
It could go into pay raises. It can go into whatever we designate it for, go into more ambulances. Hey, think about that. We're raising the rate so we can buy more ambulances, or we're raising the rate to pay firemen. It's our choice.
It also can go into, all of those things are good things, and, but I just want to make sure that you also think, one thing that wasn't on there, it can go into a reduction in the property tax rate. I mean, this is a change in the way you get revenue if you want it to be. You can, you can be looking at this and saying, look, I, I don't want to use general funds, capital improvement funds, to do this, because I want to reduce that rate and let users of services pay for their services, and, and that would allow you... So, I mean, what, what I would like to see maybe some of this be spent on is reducing, buying down the property tax rate.
There's three things.
So that we quit having such a high property tax rate.
Currently, right now, you're using general fund dollars to replace ambulances, which I would think...
Which is exactly what you pointed out, that you said, look, I could buy an ambulance with this, or I could let this...
And you could relieve the general fund of those. I mean, it's all general fund dollars. This, this all goes back into the general fund.
I believe you made that clear when you said I could be buying my fire truck three hundred thousand a year, and I thought you did a fine job of that. I'm just pointing out that we could do, we also can do, like we normally do, pieces of, let's use some of this for a pay decompression problem, and some of this to buy down the tax rate, and that's the way we generally think.
But we're not there today. All we're there today is Mr. Hirschfeld's made it clear, do we want to change the user fee? We have a motion and a second to do that. Let's get to that vote, but I, do I have any public input on this?
Yes, yes, sir.
Come on up.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman and Councilwoman. It's been a pleasure spending all day with y'all today. My name is Gloria Pretty. I'm the Services Coordinator at Placadel Soul Retirement Center, and I'm also a faculty member of Sol Ross University. As a Services Coordinator, I don't know if very many of you are familiar with Placadel Soul, but we are a HUD facility. We have, we have an excellent fire department. Nobody can say anything different that knows about them, but we have the ambulances on our campus, and I'm just talking about Placadel Soul. I'm not addressing the other elderly campuses, but I want you to be completely aware that at Placadel Soul, their social security check, which is probably all that they have to live on, there's, the median social security amount is seven hundred dollars. I broke my leg in the Pauline Division six weeks ago. I received a bill for four hundred and eighty-five dollars that was picking me up at Pauline and taking me to Shannon. So my only concern is, please, you know, think about the elderly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other public input? Okay, let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. Two nays.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Let's go to item number...
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. This is the first public hearing in introducing an ordinance amending two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget for grants, new projects, and incomplete projects. And you don't look like Morgan Trainor at all, so...
Sorry about that. This item pertains to four separate amendments that were, oh, sorry. Steve Maffey, I'm with the Finance Department.
Thank you.
Again, this item pertains to budget amendment items that were brought to the Finance Department. I'll briefly go through those, and then if you have any questions on those, please let me know. The first item is a JAG grant that we receive, the Police Department does receive, and shares that with the Sheriff's Department. We do receive this annually. The next item pertains to a new Freedom Grant through the Contra Valley Transit District. This is for the downtown pedestrian improvement project. This, this grant amount is in, is in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-one. The project will also be paid out of fund balance from north and south tiers as well. The next item pertains to the Gateway Planning Project that is involved with the Lake Nazworthy Plan. This is in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars that will be paid out of the Nazworthy Trust Fund interest. The final item is an FAA grant that we are receiving in the amount of four million dollars. We will also be paying a match to that out of the passenger facility charges that we receive.
Any questions, anything else? Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve as presented from Ms. Farmer, a second from Mr. Adams. Have questions or comments on this item? Mr. Silvas?
How much does the, the Lake Nazworthy Trust Fund, how much interest does it generate on an annual? Any idea?
Mike would probably have a better idea for that one.
I don't know an exact number right now. I think that number is down around a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. The, the interest that we're talking about here is interest that exceeds the expenditures out of that interest over the last few years. We accumulated that, and rather than have it go away, we knew that council was planning to make some expenditures related to maximizing the value of the lake, and so we accumulated that money and set it aside so that it could be used and not just fall back into the fund, or be expended on a non-council-approved project in the water fund.
Mr. Silvas?
We grabbed it and isolated it so that it, because we knew council was working toward that, the Nazworthy work that we've been talking about.
I'm on that investment oversight committee, so just some insight on it is, it's highly restricted as to what you can invest that money in, so you're, you are only allowed to invest it in very safe investments, so, so there's no real return opportunity, okay? So because you, you are putting it in very safe, low-risk, low-return, and then we're in an interest rate environment of nothing, then currently you have about ten, ten and a half million dollars invested at an interest rate of nearly nothing, and so roughly a one percent return on, on that money right now, hence his one hundred and ten thousand dollars or so in annual return. We're restricted on very safe investments, and we have a very low-rate, interest-rate environment in the country right now, so that thing is just not making any money the last several years.
So then, the, the Lake Nazworthy Trust Fund interest minus this three hundred and thirty-five thousand leaves what?
Well, we have that amount that we accumulated, and when we first set that money aside, it was approximately eight hundred, thank you, Steve, my goodness, it was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. But we have done this project and we, I don't remember what the other expenditure was. That, that number with this 300,000 dollar roughly planning expenditure, we'll bring that down. How we, the last time we talked about this, we had that number. I don't have that number handy. I could guess, but.
So it was 800?
That's exactly.
It was 800,000?
At one point, it was 800,000.
Minus this.
We had a small project that we did and I don't remember what it was.
What was that other project?
It was 125 or 100 and somewhat thousand dollars and I, and it's not coming, the, the number's coming to me right now, but the project is not. And this is basically going to cut the, the total in a little less than half, is what I'm remembering.
I don't remember, but I don't remember what that was. We can certainly.
The other project was?
Right.
I don't remember anything about it.
So I, I think that number is going to be down. It could be 300 to 500,000 dollars in that accumulated amount. What it earns this year will be closer to the 100 to 150,000 dollar amount and we can spend 90% of what it earns.
I'm just trying to grasp where we're at on that.
But this, let me remind you, this is what I may be asking you guys to take to the voters in a referendum to move it to the Health Foundation who makes more like 5%. And they did so in 2009 when everybody, they were still making money in 2009 when everybody else wasn't. They're very good at investing money and then we could see.
They do.
Three, 400,000 dollars.
They do lose money also, so.
But it's, it's slightly more risky, but they're very consistent.
They do? They have, they have, for someone I know, so. Anyway, so I'm just saying, you just need to make sure you give all of the picture.
Okay.
When you, when you do it. And I'm not meaning now, Mr. Alexander. I even understand what you're saying and think you've got a good idea there. I just am saying be sure you lay things out very clearly for them, that it's more risk, more reward. And historically, they've hit reward most of the time. And they, and, and from inception, if you look at their performance, for sure, there would be more money in that account going down that path rather than the one we're on.
Councilman, the limited nature of the investments which are allowed are designed to protect the principal. The, the, I hate to use principal, two different principles, but the principle behind that is that no reward is worse the risk of losing money you've borrowed for a project. If we had borrowed bond money and intended to invest it for a short period of time just to earn a little money on it while the project was being worked up, but then we had a big loss of that money, there is no reward worth that when the public trust is at risk. So our investment opportunities are limited to investments which typically have little or no risk for loss of principal.
Spell that, which principle are you talking about? Spell it, spell that.
It's either LE or AL. It's one of those.
Peely.
But hence the ultra-low returns. In exchange for that safety, you, you, you lose return.
Okay. I have a, I have a motion in a second to approve these budget changes and so do I have public input on this item? Okay, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item number 26. This is consideration of approving a reallocation from the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Rehab Funds to Galilee Community Development Corporation to manage and execute the program under the Helping Hands Organization. We have a presentation by our Neighborhood and Family Services Director, Bob Salas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We are asking for approval to reallocate 150,000 CDBG funds to Galilee to manage and execute our housing rehab projects. Over the past several years, our grant funds have been cut in half. In fact, we've gone from 1.4 million to 698,000. That has forced us to reduce manpower over the years and in fact, we've gone from 10 to six current staff positions. Unfortunately, we still need to continue saving funds wherever we can to ensure that we can fund our, pay for our salaries and benefits. Recently, lost a key person, staff member. With the vacancy, we have an opportunity to fill that position and allow Galilee to manage those projects at a cost of about 15,000, which kind of saves the city up to 37,000 dollars a year. We will continue to administer our other base programs such as emergency repair, engine cremation, special needs rental assistance, weatherization, first-time home buyers and demolition programs. Galilee has the ability to carry out construction projects using in-house contractors and with community volunteers. That really saves, they save us funds and allows us to do more projects. However, I think Galilee will continue bidding out the majority of the projects, so our local contractors will get a chance to participate. We think it's a win-win for everyone and we're asking the council to approve it.
Like to make motion to approve as presented.
Motion from Mr. Adams, second from Mr. Silves that we approve as presented. Questions on the presentation? Public input on the item? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 28, please. This is the consideration of and possible action on water-related issues.
First item for your consideration, Council, is the level of Lake Nazworthy with the good rains that we had recently. The level of Lake Nazworthy was restored some just from the runoff, from the rain onto the lake and the runoff, the localized runoff into it. However, at this point in time, the lake is still about 12 inches below its normal operating level. Twin Buttes Reservoir up above Nazworthy did pick up a little over 6,000 feet of water, so there is water that can be gravity-fed through the gates of Twin Buttes into Nazworthy if we want to bring Nazworthy back up to the operating, to its normal operating level. It's been at least two weeks, so the water in Twin Buttes has had time to settle down, so we don't have a lot of the debris and the sediment that would have moved through in a flood event. So if it's council wishes, we could then begin refilling Nazworthy.
Mayor, if I could add, we did get a call about, from a lake resident who was preparing to do some repair work and they were questioning what our intentions were for maintenance of that lake level. And because we have options at this point, we thought it appropriate to seek council's direction.
Okay, how low is the lake? I mean, it got as low as nearly two feet, right? And now it's back up to within?
Right. It was roughly 24 to 25 inches low. It picked up right at a foot, so we're about 12 to 14 inches low right now.
Now, don't we normally lower it in the winter time?
Beginning in January, we let it start declining from January through March about six to eight inches, so we do have some room in case we do get some spring runoff there. So we could fill it up to a certain point right now and let it just start naturally.
What are you recommending?
Pulling back down. I would say we'd bring it up at least eight inches at this point in time. Would get us close to that.
Kind of to the January level. Go ahead and hit that now, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, this one, again, this one says possible action, so Mr. Hurstfeld, does that make sense to you to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to follow recommendation.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to follow the recommendation of the director on the level of Lake Nazworthy, raising it up a few, somewhat to a normal January level. So do I have questions on that?
I just have a question. It's an administrative question. If we shut the gates, just on Will Wildy's command, why, why can't, we didn't, council didn't, did not order those gates shut, so why can't he just open them back up? When it started raining.
What gates?
The gates from Twin Buttes to Nazworthy were shut.
From Twin Buttes to Nazworthy.
To block debris. Okay, so we're blocking debris. The debris settles out. We can open the gates back up. Why does it take a council action to open it back up unless there's a significant issue?
Good point.
I think, I think today, at least today, it was clarified that they were thinking that at least somebody on the lake was saying, what are your, in other words, from a policy direction, come to the policy board, what are your intentions about the level you're going to keep this lake at so that I can make my decisions as a landowner around the lake, what I'm going to do? So I think that probably makes it, at least makes this discussion make sense.
Okay.
If not, if, if not in a general basis, what you're saying being the way to go, I believe that's what we were asked.
Well, if it were August, if this was August 1st.
Wouldn't it be nice just to open the gates?
We need to open those gates up, get the level up. It's an economic problem.
And not wait as many as 13 days during evaporation, et cetera.
I know of people going to other lakes and I know of businesses that are suffering because the lake's low.
Yeah, I think you're, I believe you were on point. I'm just pointing out, I think today it has to do with that. I think we should be basically telling them, based on this vote, that we intend to run things like we always have. Nothing new or special or different in our direction, that we will run the lake down some in January, February and March as we normally have to allow for the room for spring rain runoff without flooding concern and so forth. And so I think that's what we would do. Do we have public input on this item? Okay, thanks, Mr. Alexander. I think your point's well taken. Do we have any further question before I call for the vote? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is item B, the pumping of the south pool of Twin Buttes Reservoir. Mr. Wildy?
With the low conditions in Twin Buttes Reservoir, last summer, pumping was initiated the 1st of August. We've continued pumping through that point in time and transferred water out of the south pool into the north pool of the lake. And our contract with the pumping company has the option where we can discontinue that or we even talk to them about putting it on hold if we need to at any point in time. So what we're here today is to get your direction on if we should continue pumping through the winter to try to remove all the water from the south pool or stop pumping at this point in time. Runoff is coming into the south pool at this point in time, probably over the next four months. The south pool would fill back up, start going through the equalization channel about the March, April timeframe of next year. And at that point in time, reconsider initiating the pumping again on the, on the reservoir there.
I mean, what I'd like to see is. I don't know about when we stop and so I'd love to hear input, but I definitely would like to see us go ahead and, and proactively unless, unless we get significant rains that change our water picture between now and May, I'd like to see us go ahead and start at the beginning of evaporation season, moving that water, not, not. So I'd like you to know now that, look, let's go ahead and start, whether that's, you know, May or, or early June, but let's not wait until August. Let's go ahead and preempt heavy evaporation by moving water earlier in the timeframe. But so, I know you'd like to weigh in on this. I don't know if there are others that would like to.
I've noticed that you pretty much look at the sun angle and that's what your evaporation is going to be. So June is the peak. And I'd earlier said that probably moving the water starting April 1st would be a good idea, but it takes three months to move the water and, and you get all the way into late June before the water's all moved and so the evaporation's full blast by that point in time. Maybe we should move it back to March or even February, February 15th, March 1st. But I would just continue moving water right now and wait till March 1st. That's just kind of a number. And you can look at my graph here, you know, it's before June. May's pretty, a lot of evaporation in May. But that, that lake surface area will be kind of small by then, so I'd recommend.
I mean, the heavy, this year, wasn't it July, it was really kind of July, August where things were outsized evaporation.
That's right. It's a little different each year. I have 2010, 2011.
Look at your rainfall deal. I'm trying to wait till we see if we get rainfall also, so at least take that into balance in what you're doing. I know that kind of April, May can be the heavier rainfall.
The rainfall levels have evened out, their latest charts, they're evened out. There's, May and September were traditionally the big rainfall months. May is still big, but there's a lot of, it's more even now than it was.
You can't really wait until May, I don't think.
You can't wait till May.
Right, and so we can't wait till we find out if it rains in May per se, right? If you're going to beat evaporation. I, I just wanted to hear some of that too.
But the South Concho also increases, right now, this time of year, suddenly it'll just pop up because the trees stop sucking the water. And it lasts till about, is it about April, is it April 21st or is it March when the trees start?
It'd be into mid-April when the trees really stop.
So it's about mid-April, the, the river starts flowing less. And so we can pump all we want. And this is why April, the first time I came up with that, you can pump and pump and the water's still coming into the lake. I don't, I don't know if you can beat it. I'm not sure.
What thoughts?
Sure. It's tough. I mean, you get about 14 cubic feet a second out of that, that South Concho and you get about 19 maybe out of our pumps. I'm not sure exactly.
A lot of which though.
You're barely winning.
But when it's normal, but when it's normal flow, you're going to be passing it forward. So you need to move it.
Let it fill up, over, you know, flow through the channel. We'll lose some water underground there, but.
I want to let you have all the time you want, but I want to move.
I would make a recommendation that March 1st, we start pumping again if we're, if we're in a drought level. That, that's what I would.
Stop now, though? That's really his question.
I would stop now and save our money for March 1st. If we're in drought level one, two or three, we won't be in three.
Okay, another person that spends a lot of time on this is Mr. Hurstfeld, so let me get his comments too.
I, I would concur. I think, I think now's the time to stop the pumping, you know. And the only question mark is whether it's March 1 or April 1. That, I, I.
We have time. I personally think we have time to make that decision. I think.
We have time. Today, we don't have to.
I think you should tickle your calendar for a February, first meeting in February discussion because.
Anything I'll do is I'll get the National Weather Service to give us lots of average data.
I would agree.
Okay.
But I, I would kill the pumping right now is what, I agree with that recommendation.
Ms. Farmer, others that'd like to speak? Mr. Silves?
So Will, if you, if you kill the pumping, you have to remove the lines and everything, start all over again?
And that ties to discussions we had with the pump supplier this past week. He gave us two options. One is we can go by the current contract where he would come in and demobilize, remove everything, come back in next year and reset it all back up. Or his other option was to just remove the pumps and leave the pipe in at this point in time. Which option is best? At four months, they're identical. So we're kind of talking that March 1 timeframe. We go either route, they're, they're the same. If you go five or six months, you're better off to have him come in and remove everything and then bring it back.
So if he leaves the pipe, I mean, are we renting the pipe?
Yeah, in essence, we would pay a standby fee to keep the pipe here. He would remove the pumps and we'd pay a demobilization and remobilization to bring the pumps back in.
Something we probably should maybe want to look at is what would it cost for us to buy the pipe?
We have a number on that too. It was considerably more than, than just doing the standby fees at that point in time.
So what, what is your expert opinion? Do we stop the pumping or?
As far as that, yes, we concur to stop the pumping at this point in time and then start up, I would say around March 1, unless we see something that would really change that between now and then, we can come back and evaluate that at that point in time.
And it makes more sense to me to leave the pipe, remove the pumps.
Yes, and that's, the March 1 is the break-even period scenario.
His math and all this is lining up. Let's just go with, with, I mean, there's a consensus being built here. So why don't we keep it, pay a standby fee, be ready to go March the 1st and unless, unless something happens in the next few months that changes our mind and then we'll make a judgment then. But, okay, that's consistent with what Mr. Alexander was saying, consistent with what Mr. Hurstfeld was saying, consistent with what Mr. Wildy's saying. And so somebody turn that into a motion that we stop pumping now, be prepared to have the pipe on standby and hold until we anticipate starting to pump again on March 1st unless weather changes.
So move.
Can I have movement?
You said it. It's been a long day.
Well, there you go. All right.
You're a little red there.
I just enjoyed it, that's all. All right, here we go. I know I got a motion from Mr. Hurstfeld. Who won the second there, Ms. Ramirez?
I moved second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. I'll get your questions, sir. And all it is, is pumping of the south pool will, will stop now, stand by on the pipe and, and start again March the 1st unless we change our minds. Is there any public input on this item? Is there any further question or comment? Call for the vote. All the, I can't, can't take anymore. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Next item, Twin Buttes South Pool Outlet Works and Other Improvements.
We'll be brief on this and there's been a lot of discussion over the years about the south pool of Twin Buttes Reservoir, which doesn't have any kind of an outlet works on it, which would allow that water that we're having to pump to be released by gravity through the, through the dam. We initiated discussions with the Bureau of Reclamation concerning a possible project for installing some type of a conduit through the south part of Twin Buttes Dam, which could then allow gravity flow of this water out of the dam. The Bureau responded back to us, what I would say in a very favorable manner. Their response came back saying that they would be agreeable to looking at that, plus any other options we may consider such as lowering the equalization channel so that that water can flow that direction, installing pipeline systems to gravity flow the water through there. So they were very receptive to, to looking at it and working with us. Their recommendation on it was to, to first off, go through the value engineering assessment of these different options, which will look at potential environmental impacts, risk to the facility, the cost and those things, which will help you then decide which is the best option in the long term for the city. So we would recommend to continue moving forward with working with the Bureau on that. Our first step would be then is to go out probably for consultants to put us, get us a consultant on board for the long term as we go through this to, to start doing those studies. The Bureau of Reclamation, as far as funding on this, they said all costs associated with this will be, have to be borne by the city. So, but they, they will provide the technical oversight of, of all the work that we do here to, to see that it does comply with the national policies.
What, what kind of money we're looking at to start these studies and maybe even complete the studies?
Yeah, as far as the value engineering studies, I would say if a budget of around 75. seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars would cover the initial phase of what we need to look at for that part in some of the preliminary engineering that would be needed for then.
And where would the money come from? Water fund?
As far as they look, have to come from one of the capital accounts within Water Yes.
Okay, and we spent how much? How many, how much did we just spend on the pumping?
The pumping average is about a hundred thousand dollars a month, so three months, we've spent over three hundred thousand.
This is, to me, a slam dunk, but...
Oh, no, it is.
It's not a capital expenditure to put the pipe in, but...
Again, right. Again, under the Open Meetings Act, we, we're not allowed really to, to get together in groups of seven, but we have been getting together in a group of three for nearly two years, and we have talked about this and gotten a lot of advice from Will and others in, in this business, and gathered a lot of, and all of that points toward the ability to move water out of the south pool or out of the South Concho intake, and that's what this is. And so it would be, it would be consistent with efforts that we've made over time, and so I would definitely ask that we allow him the opportunity to move forward with this value engineering and be sure, so I'll make the motion that we allow him to move forward with the value engineering on these projects, consistent with what we've learned and tried to do.
This is a very positive step, I think, for looking at the city long term.
This is, this has not been this easy in the past, right? The history is, they haven't wanted to work with us.
The Bureau has always been concerned about any kind of modification of the structure because of the seepage problems that the dam experienced there, but with the retire, the cutoff oil that was put in several years ago has functioned very well. They're very pleased with the stability of the structure at this point in time, so I think that has changed their outlook on modifications that may happen.
They're willing to at least listen and let us try. Okay, well, I think all that is good. We have a motion and a second there. Do we have any public input? Okay, do we have questions or comments here? Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to follow-up and administrative issues. There's a consideration, let's see, nothing on number thirty. Number thirty-one, there's a consideration of approving various board nominations and designated council members, design and historic review commission from myself or David Mazur to a first full term to serve until September of 2013, and Lee Ann Bailey from Mr. Alexander to a first full term September of 2013. I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
Second, from Mr. Adams. Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we would look at announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Valenzuela, okay? I know we have, let me get my fifteen, sixteen, and, what'd you get?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-nine, for sure, because we tabled them. And then pass that, let's, Ms. Farmer?
I would like to ask Anthony Wilson to check into something. I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent certain, but I want to make sure. You know, we've made a real concentrated effort to reach the public through newspaper, media, television, and I discovered something in the process of moving here recently. Channel seventeen, government information channel for us and all the things that we're, we're doing and showing, but if you only have basic cable, you only go to channel thirteen and you do not get channel seventeen, and there's a large portion of San Angelo that only have basic cable service. So I've asked Anthony, permission of council, if he will check into that in our franchise agreement and see if we can work out something with the cable company to get something done.
I've got basic and I've got seventeen.
Well, I don't, in, over in my neighborhood, and I was asking the neighbor, the neighbors on each side of me, and this is in southwest San Angelo, they only have basic, and they don't get channel seventeen.
So the north side getting special treatment again?
We get special treatment.
Again?
Again.
We get seventeen on basic.
But he's, if, if it's all right, he's going to check into it and follow up with council on it.
All right. How about that, that there's a, you know, something that's not consistent anyway? Okay. Very, very reasonable, hope that that gets resolved. Other things that are future agenda items?
Future agenda item, we need to have a discussion about these sweep, sweepstakes slot machines.
You read my mind.
We need to have a discussion because...
Illegal.
There's one camp saying they're illegal, there's another camp saying they're not illegal, there's one camp saying, saying that we are, we are willingly and knowingly allowing citizens to break the law. People are saying that they're playing, but they're not playing for money. I had a meeting with a guy this morning, his wife lost thirty dollars one day and went back the next day and won three hundred, and she got paid money, which makes those slot machines illegal. So we need to, we need to put that on the agenda and possibly, I know that the county attorney has been, has been contacted, or, I don't know if we can maybe do something with the county on this, but we definitely need to add closure to the rumors that are out there. Either it's going to be legal or it's not, and I'd like to see that as a discussion item so we can move as a council, either in the direction of, two ways to deal with a rumor, you either confront it or you deny it. So we need to figure out what we're doing here.
That's a law enforcement, you know, city attorney, law enforcement.
There is a task force that has Tim Vasquez, Chief Vasquez, is organized that consists...
Ms. Bowling, I'm not sure we can all hear you.
Oh, my. Thank you. There is a task force comprised of TABC, members of the, some departments within the police department, and with the county attorney and an assistant.
So should we be, as council, should we be referring, what should we be telling people that are contacting us? Because I'm receiving a whole lot of phone calls.
Well, I'm...
And emails.
I know that you wish to respond in a productive manner to your constituents, so it would be hard for me to tell you, for you to tell them to just contact the county attorney. So I have recently been discussing the status of this with the team, so I will look back at finding a way you can articulate that the matter is in the county's jurisdiction, and I will get back to you before, before the agenda's posted. Okay, thank you.
Mercy.
I've also been receiving the calls that you're talking about, but, and certified mail, which I forwarded to Alicia, and the calls that I'm getting, I'm saying I just cannot discuss an ongoing matter and reprimands legal, the city.
Okay. Other agenda items?
Yes. I also received the same, I've got it right here, so whatever your direction is, Mrs. Bowling, you know, that's what we're going to take. As long as we have wind of it, know of it, and run with it, that's, that's, I'm, I'm fine with it. The other thing, with all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Morrison, I know that a, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by the Maxwells, who are proponents of the proposed Dollar Gen, Dollar General, I believe it was, that we did away with or denied. If anybody's interested in listening to that thing again, I, I'm here asking, you know? And if not, we'll, we'll let it rest.
I'd like to hear it again. That, we, I found more information. They, there may have been a due process problem in that they weren't notified of the council. I mean, that's why nobody showed up. They didn't have notification. If that's the case...
But they have, they receive paperwork from the city, and on that paperwork, it tells you that it, it will go before council, and you have the right to appear on their paperwork.
All I had to do was read the paperwork. For discussion, so they can come here and tell us what they have, what they didn't have, that would not be fair. There's a lot of people affected. It's just for discussion, and then this is where the city attorney can clarify positions. They can clarify their position. If they weren't notified, then it's, it's a shame.
AJ, if you want to add something, that's...
Mr. Maxwell's in the audience, if anybody wants, he can answer questions.
So, it's not an agenda item, it's a future agenda item, so...
I want to put it on the agenda so he can answer questions.
Mr. Morrison, are you wanting it on the agenda? Mr. Morrison, or?
No, I think, I think it's been settled. Paul has the right to bring it back. I was just saying that Mr. Maxwell is here, if, you know, if anybody wants to talk to anybody.
Okay.
So are you saying you're going to bring it back to act on it? Is that what you're wishing to do, or just discuss the fact that you don't have any jurisdiction to act on it?
Right, we can't act on, we need to, we, we can't even talk about it right now, really. We can't ask Mr. Maxwell or Terry Smith any questions. We can't ask, we can't ask anybody questions, and, and they have information to bring forth.
About the substance of their need to appeal, or what is the...
What is the process for appeal?
Did they need to appeal it if there was not a due process?
The process, which I did, I have informed folks along the way, is they have a, an appeal to district court at this time, and then within a year, they can redesign or just submit a new request to council, but it can't be until a year, that's the timeframe, and then council can determine at that time whether, and that's a rehearing, whether to have it go back to planning to initiate a review of the item. But right now, their appeal was to district court.
For a re-zoning?
Yes. Yes, it's, zoning laws are very consistent and heavily governed by the government code, and all processes, you know, when administrative relief is exhausted, at this level, the appeal is to district court.
Okay. Again, any others?
Mayor, I have a couple. I'd like clarity. Councilmember Farmer, how would you like Mr. Wilson's response? Would you like a Friday memo sent out, or would you like a future agenda?
Friday memo is fine.
Okay. Also, we have been, we had a request from the Development Corporation Board to, for the council to consider the possibility of a joint meeting, and council responded favorably. Shaun has talked to the board, and their proposal is at your next regular meeting, to have a joint meeting around the lunchtime timeframe, and that would take some coordination on our part. I mean, the ideal situation would be that we could conduct our regular business in advance of, and complete that regular business in advance of that meeting, but that is their proposal at this point, some kind of a, a joint session during the lunch hour or around that timeframe.
It, it was my understanding that we can do it during executive session if we just talk about our goals and likes and, et cetera, and not any specific project.
Well, I, I think whether or not we had a joint open session or a, a joint executive session would be depend, as you say, on what topics we would propose to discuss, and it might involve a, both, an open portion and a closed portion, or an executive portion.